Eric, you ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jan Fried and I'm Chair of Plan and Zoning Commission and I'll read the rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the Commission, other than site plans and subdivision blocks, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the City Clerk or Community Development Department staff at 515-689-9485 for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. If applicants wish to share materials not already submitted with the application, please email them to planning@dm.gov.org so a staff host may be able to share them on the screen when you present. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order. With each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Staff has attempted to compile a list of people who would like to speak on each item. Staff will first call on these people and then will open it up to anyone else who wishes to speak. To request to speak during the hearing, please use the raise hand function on Zoom webinar via the Internet or dial *9 on your phone. Once permission to speak is given, to unmute and mute, dial *6 on your phone. You will be required to give your name and address for the record prior to speaking. Also, we ask that you keep your microphones and phones on mute unless you've been given the chance to address the Commission by the Chair. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal if any opponent spoke. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. The hearing will then be closed and the Commission will discuss and vote on the issue. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or member of the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. Please know that typical accommodations may be limited by emergency requirements as issued by the State of Iowa and the City of Des Moines. Roll call, Tyler?
Abby Chungith?
Here.
Rocky Spazato?
Here.
Will Page?
Here.
Emily Webb?
Here.
Dory Bries?
Here.
Jan Fried?
Here.
Caleb Burksen?
Here.
Lisa Howard? Lisa Howard? I see you're on here, we'll come back. Steve Wallace?
Here.
Carolyn Jensen?
Here.
Francis Bogus?
Here.
Greg Watier?
Here.
Greg Jones?
Here.
And Lisa, are you with us?
Yes.
All right, we got all 14 members present.
Okay, great, thanks Tyler. The minutes from the last meeting, any corrections, changes? Otherwise, a motion to approve?
This is Dory, I'll move approval of the minutes.
Thanks, Dory. Tyler?
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Dory Bries?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Abstain.
Johnny Alsebar?
Here.
We're voting on the minutes, yea or nay? From December 17th? Will Page?
Abstain.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
And Abby Chungith?
Yes.
The motion carries 12-0-2.
Okay, thanks Tyler. It's my understanding that item number 15 is to be continued, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's a request to continue that to the February 18th here hearing. That would also allow another aspect of this to be added into their request for rezoning.
Okay, thanks Eric. Do I have motion to continue, please?
I'd move.
Greg, oh, thanks Greg. Okay, Tyler?
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungith?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsebar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
And Jan Fried?
Yes.
Motion carries 14-0.
Thank you. And item 13 has been withdrawn, as you can see on the slide. Okay, we have several items on the consent agenda. Item number one, request from HJT, represented by Jack Houghton, for the following regarding the property at 2101 Dixon Street. Eric? So this is on consent. Is there anyone in, I'm sorry Eric, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to pull this item from consent? Is there anyone on the Commission who wants to pull this item? Okay? Are we seeing any hands?
I'm not seeing any hands, Jan.
Thank you for helping me with that. All right. Item number two on the consent agenda. Hold on, okay. Request from Polk County Conservation Board, represented by Richard Leopold, for the vacation of the following segments of public street in the vicinity of 3546 East Sheridan Avenue for purpose of a project to remove the roadways and restore the area for incorporation into the lower Four Mile Creek Greenway. Joining land is owned by Polk County. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item?
I am not seeing any hands.
Anyone on the Commission who would like to hear this item? Okay, item number three. Request from Porter Hardware, represented by David Porter, for the following regarding the property at 4207 Hubble Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item? Oh, I see a hand? Okay?
Please give your first and last name so we can get that.
You have to hit *6 to unmute yourself? Okay?
This is Skip Moore. I'd like to speak to item two. I'm trying to figure out how this system works.
Okay, so you'd rather hear item two, not three?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. So we will pull item number two. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear number three from Porter Hardware? Please raise your hand. Is there anyone on the Commission who would like to hear number three, item number three? Okay? We'll go to item number four. We'll leave, we'll go to item number four. Request from Jerry's Homes, represented by Jay Cohen, for review and approval of a Second Amendment to the Pearl Lake PUD Conceptual Plan on property located at 3,000 East Peyton Avenue and in the vicinity of the 3,001 block of East Peyton Avenue to allow revision to the street layout, change the property on the East Army Post Road frontage to large lot one household lots from previously approved townhomes and reduce the minimum lot sizes for specified lots to have a minimum 70 foot width and minimum 9,600 square foot area. Additional subject property is owned by Janet Boehner and the City of Des Moines. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item? Item number four.
I see a hand up.
Okay?
I just allowed Roger Hall to unmute himself. If he would like to confirm he wants to hear number four?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm here with Janet Boehner. We reside at 3,009. And what we're concerned with is here
We just want to
We'll take it up, yeah.
We just want to know if you want to, you need, you want to speak to this item?
Um, just on the Army Post site?
Okay, is this
Nothing to do with our property?
Yeah, no, the question is whether item number four for Jerry's Homes, if you want to speak to it, we need to pull it from the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to it.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll pull number four. Okay, item number five. Request from City of Des Moines, represented by Pamela Cooksey, for the following regarding the property in the vicinity of 1501 Harriet Street. Is there someone in the audience who would like to hear this item? You'd like to speak to this item?
I am not seeing any hands.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on the Commission who would like to hear this item? Item number five. Okay? Item number six. Request from Catholic Health Initiatives Iowa Corporation, Mercy Medical Center, represented by Diane Cummins, for review and approval of a proposed Seventh Amendment to the Mercy Medical Center PUD Conceptual Plan on property located in the vicinity of 1111 Sixth Avenue to allow construction of a canopy on the building known as 411 Laurel Street and revision of the campus sign plan. Is there anyone listening who would like to speak to this item? You'd like to hear this item? Please raise your hand.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on the Commission? Okay? We'll leave that on. Item number seven. Request from Joppa, represented by Curtis Carlson, for the following regarding the property in the vicinity of 1010 Thirteenth Street. And then we have three item, or three A, B, and C. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to hear this item? You're here for this item? Okay, anyone in the Commission who would like to hear number seven? All right, we'll leave that on. Number eight. Request from Richard Gobel for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for the following type-two design alternatives in accordance with Chapter 135, Sections 135-9.2.4.B and 135-9.3.1.B for property located at 1539 East Bell Avenue to allow 1,140 square foot addition to the one-story house type B, which would be within seven feet of the east property line and within three feet of the west property line by incorporation of the existing detached garage. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to number eight? Item number eight. You're here for item number eight.
I don't see any.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on the Commission who would like to hear number eight? Okay, we're ready for item number nine. Request from JP Morgan Chase Bank, represented by Jacob Egan House, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Chase Bank, for a type-two design alternative in accordance with Chapter 135, Sections 135-9.2.4.B and 135-9.3.1.B for property located at 6150 Southeast Fourteenth Street to allow for 2464 square feet of the existing storefront building to be reconfigured for a financial service use where the south facade of the building would not provide any transparency when the east 30 feet of the facade is required to have 65% on the transparency being required to wrap around the street-side facade. Is there anyone here to hear this item? I do see a hand.
Nicholas Blazek?
Hi, this is Nick Blazek. I, actually, I was speaking to item eight. I would actually like to hear that. I work for Richard Gable. I thought he was gonna raise his hand, but maybe his connection didn't work. So I definitely would like to hear it.
So Nicholas, this is Eric Lundie. I had gotten communication that he was in support of the staff recommendation. Is there something you're wanting to?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Then, no, there's, there's nothing out, there's nothing that I'm, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that and I appreciate that, Eric. Okay, so anyone here who wants to hear nine, item number nine? Is there anyone on the Commission who would like to hear nine? Okay, item number 10. Request from Covenant Construction Services, represented by Alan Sprinkle, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for a type-two design alternative. Is there anyone here who would like to hear number 10? Is there anyone in the audience, anyone online, you'd like to hear item number 10? Please raise your hand. Or *6 on your phone? Anyone on the Commission who would like to hear this item? Okay. Item number 11. Request from Axiom Grey's Lake Apartments, represented by Eric Anderson, for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for the following type-two design alternatives. Is there anyone here who would like to hear this item? I see two hands, three hands. Okay? Eric, so there are people who want to hear? They're not associated with this, or they are?
I was aware of Tim Hickman as of this afternoon, so I knew there was one individual. I don't recognize the other two, but
This is, this is Jason Van Essen with Plan and Staff. I've had contact with Manuel and I know he wants to speak in opposition as well, so I think we have a couple. Thank you.
So we'll pull item 11. Okay, so if I'm correct, item number two, four, and 11 will be pulled from the consent.
Correct.
Okay. And so we will move the others. Remind me again?
1, 1, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
Right, so do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
This is Dory, I'll move the consent agenda.
Thanks, Dory. Tyler?
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alsebar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Bries?
Yes, and Tyler, I think you didn't call on me for our last motion of moving the item to continuance.
Okay. Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
And Abby Chungith?
Yes.
So a motion to approve consent agenda items 1, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Pass 14-0.
Thank you, Tyler. So we're ready for item number two?
That'll be Catherine to show her.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Catherine Drehouse, Planner for the City of Des Moines. Item two involves a number of sections of right-of-way within the greater area considered Four Mile Creek and Greenway. You can see a few of the areas and some labeling by identifying the yellow. The land adjoining was acquired through a flood buyout program. We looked at the various utilities in the area. There were several identified, but I know that the letter of intent also states how the county and the city worked together to identify any necessary utilities in the area and what would need to be taken care of. And we also looked at the traffic patterns in the area and did not see that there would be any negative impact to these right-of-way vacations. As such, staff is recommending approval of the vacations subject to our usual condition of reservation of easements for any existing utilities until such time that they are abandoned or relocated at the applicant's expense. And then I do have a copy of the letter of intent from Polk County Conservation, lists the various street locations as shown on the map. And then just a little bit about how they worked through this process and plans for moving forward to facilitate greater services and use of Four Mile Creek Greenway. The red outlines show the, show generally that we are a little bit expanded. On this case, we, for vacations, we only notify the areas that are adjoining or adjacent to or across the street from the impacted vacations, requested vacations. If there's any questions that staff can answer for you, we'd be happy to do so at this time.
Okay, is the applicant online? Please state your name and address. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of this? Catherine, do you know, is the applicant online?
Let me see if I can get a better look at that. If one of the other staff members could help me out.
I think it would be Amanda, but I don't
I see a hand up, it looks like it's a phone number. 515-473-1956, but I'm afraid I don't know who that is.
Press *6 to unmute yourself.
My name's Adam Fendrick with Polk County Conservation Board, here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, so we're, this is obviously part of our Four Mile Creek Greenway, where we'll be the land managers of this area and we're asking for the street vacation to better manage this area for natural restoration efforts.
Okay? Are there questions? Do you want to offer more information?
Uh, that's about all I can add at the moment.
That's okay. Are there questions for the, you know, the applicant? Okay? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? In support of this item? All right? Is there, is there someone, I believe there's someone online who wants to express some concerns about this proposal? Please state your name and address. *6?
Yes, this is Skip, this is Skip Moore and I'd like to speak to this item.
Okay, Skip?
I'm not speaking in favor of it or opposed to it. A, B, and C fall within Sheridan Gardens. D, E, and F fall within Grey's Woods. And my understanding is that there's not been any communication with either neighborhood about this. I think the Four Mile Project's a good project, but I'm very concerned that when you are going to vacate and remove streets in a neighborhood, that you have not consulted with those neighborhoods. D, E, and F, which are in Grey's Woods, have been blocked off. They were blocked off by Bill Stowe probably 10, 15 years ago. And when I asked Bill why he didn't remove the streets, he said in order to vacate and remove them, he felt the neighborhoods should have input before they did that. And they're already blocked, but I still think that we need to respect our neighborhoods and I would like to see this continued until there could be meetings held with the two respective neighborhoods to see what their wishes would be.
Okay, thank you, Skip? Anything, any other concerns? Skip, any other concerns?
No.
No, okay. Is there anyone else who has concerns about this and wants to speak to this item? If not, it's the applicant, can you address those concerns?
*6 to mute and unmute Adam.
Okay. Yes. I know our deputy director was meeting with the neighborhood meetings pre-COVID. Through that event, I, yeah, don't, I, I think the neighborhood meetings have not been progressing with this, with, with the pandemic. So I would defer to the board's advice if they would want us to reconvene at those meetings or, or continue on.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Or Catherine, what, do you have advice on this?
This is Eric Lundie, Senior City Planner. There's certainly not a requirement to hold neighborhood meetings for vacation requests, that's not part of the normal policy. But if the board, or the, if the Commission believes this is of a nature that needs to be considered through neighborhood outreach directly, you know, certainly they can, they can make a recommendation to continue or to ask that, you know, make a recommendation that the City Council would, before taking final consideration, would, would have the applicant reach out to the neighbors.
And Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, sorry, this is Catherine Drehouse, City of Des Moines. We also send out notification to the neighborhoods via regular dissemination of the final agenda. Is that correct?
Right, so that both of those associations would have had notice of this going on the agenda. I don't know if that speaks to Skip's greater concern of the project so much as the vacations.
Madam Chair, this is Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. The information on the notices that were provided to both Sheridan Garden and Gray's Woods by city staff of this meeting are all contained in the staff report. Those can all be found under the section seven of the staff report. That's on page two. So, we noted or wrote in the staff report that it is in Gray's Wood and Sheridan Gardens. We notified all neighborhood associations with the preliminary agenda on January 7th and the final agenda on January 15th. And then additionally, we mailed separate notifications of the hearing for this item on January 11th to the applicable neighborhood association, so Gray's Wood and Sheridan Gardens, and the primary title holder on file with Polk County for each property adjoining the requested right-of-way. And so, we mailed those Gray's Wood Neighborhood Association notices to Linda Adamson. And the Sheridan Garden notices were mailed to Kurt Lee. And that was provided in the staff report under item seven on page two. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike, for that reminder here. So, are there questions from the Commission? To the applicant or? Okay. It's time to close the public hearing. Discussion from the Commission.
Jan, this is Rocky.
Yeah, Rocky.
I'll move staff.
Okay, thanks, Rocky. Any discussion from other members? Okay, we have a motion. Tyler?
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Asselore? Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Briles?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Kayla Burkston?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Genison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
No.
Abby Chungu?
Yes.
And Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
Motion carries 13-1.
Thank you. We're ready for item number four.
Madam Chair, this is Michael Ludwig. I just wanted to confirm that this is a recommendation only to the city council. And so, there would actually be a receive and file of this recommendation by the council. And then at a later time, the real estate division of the city would be setting a public hearing on the actual vacation of the right-of-way. So, just wanted to confirm that this was just a recommendation to the council.
Thanks, Mike. Item number four. Eric?
Madam Chair, Eric Lundey, Senior City Planner. Item four is a request from Jerry Holmes to review and seek approval of the Second Amendment to Pearl Lake PUD conceptual plan. This is a PUD that's been on the books since the early 2000s. And it was amended once to kind of carve out an existing household and reconfigure at one time. The you can see there's a large detention basin, so one portion that's been implemented from the original approval is this regional basin. It did get constructed. There's also trail development through the property that's also been constructed. So, that's in place now. This has had approval. Originally, this had approval for 15 townhomes in this area and then 50 residential lots. However, over time, the flood plain designation has changed, causing the ability to develop some of the areas that were originally approved to have to be rethought. So, this plan will reduce the number of lots total. I'll let the applicant speak to that. But some of the lot sizes reductions, there's a handful of lots, they're looking to go less than the original 80-foot minimum that this was approved as. They would still be greater than 70s. This is looking across from East Peyton to the southwest. You can see the dam on the right-hand side in the center of the photo. This is kind of panning a little further west, so you get the sense of the terrain. And then this is looking more directly south when you're more straight north of the dam and a little bit further southeast. And then more straight south at the western side, just to the right is the homestead of Janet Banter, I think, who has indicated they want to speak to this. And Janet was also signature to consent to the application by Jerry's Homes as an owner within the PUD. This is looking from the southwest side where the trail crosses kind of actually center. So, you can see now the trail through the site around the east side of the basin. And this is looking more directly north from East Army Post Road. And then a little further to the west, I believe this is Janet Banter's homestead, which is within the PUD you'll see on the map. So, this is the plan, and you would have gotten this in your packet. This is the house that's been kind of carved off to leave the acreage with the home, existing home. There's two street areas that are proposed with, I believe now 39 lots total, including the three that would replace the original townhome area along East Army Post Road. There's some larger lots there. One of them's kind of a flag, but it has a larger piece at the back. They're all over 10,000 square feet in area. I'm going to go through the staff report, but really the major concern here from staff's perspective is this doesn't really change the density. In fact, it somewhat lowers the density getting rid of townhomes. A couple, you know, a handful of the lots are being proposed with smaller lot sizes. Those were listed, I believe, in the staff report. But for the most part, this is preserve the original intent of larger lots. Most of them are at least 80. Again, there's just a handful that would be between 70 and 80. So, I don't think from a staff perspective, we believe that that was really altering the character or the sort of this, you know, placing these homes too close together, for example, which might be a concern that was raised. There is something, that area to the south, that former area C, they do need to show conceptually how they can, how they're planning to get utilities at whatever point in the future that area does get developed. The utilities needed to serve that area are a ways away, so that wouldn't be an immediate final plat that would come about with this. But they do need to conceptually show how they're going to provide those sanitary and water utilities to that area in Lot C. So, one of the recommendations staff is making is to show that in the plan. And they're available. They just need to show that graphically in the plan. And then we do want to note, we got a comment from the Fire Protection Bureau that they need a note that would require any preliminary and final plats to show dead-end segments would provide proper turnaround for fire apparatus. So, you'll get to review the preliminary plat for this, to reflect this amendment. And that would actually be something then that would be shown on a plat. We did get cards from notified owners. And this is the one, it's actually one of the property owners within the, that also consented to the application. And then another one down here. Generally, the comments are referencing the loss of the undeveloped area. And then this, the property owner's concern about the lot sizes being narrowed. So, this reflects the map. The couple of the red cards are like right up here, so it's hard to see the red. And they're both, these are both outside of the 200-foot area, but they are within the 250. Are there any questions for staff at this point?
Any questions for Eric at this time from the Commission? Is the applicant here? State your name and address, please.
Looks like Jay Cowan's on. He has to unmute his mic.
Okay, star six.
Go ahead, Jay.
Hello, this is Melissa Hills with Civil Engineering Consultants.
Okay.
Can you hear me? 2486 Street in Urbendale. I'm the engineer on the project, and I can speak on behalf of Jerry's Homes. We are in agreement with the staff comments that Eric brought up. I have added the water connection on Army Post Road and sanitary connection to the trunk on my drawings for that south parcel. The other comment concerning temporary turnarounds, I've since added that to the plan as well. So, we are in agreement with staff comments on that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have of me.
Okay, questions? From Melissa Hills from the Commission?
Oh, I, sorry, I meant to also say that the lot sizes are all 80-foot except for four of them, which are just shy of the 80-feet. I think I have four lots that are about 76-foot wide. So, just a little shy of the 80. And then otherwise, all of them are 80-foot plus lots, which are bigger than the lots in the subdivision to the north and the subdivision to the south. So, these are actually, will be larger lot homes than what's surrounding this development. And with a 20-foot side yard setback, the houses won't be right on top of each other. They'll have quite a bit of separation between. And as far as the open space goes, the center ground in between the developable parcels is a 12-acre pond in green belt with a rec trail going through it. So, that, along with our outlaw areas that are not developable because of flood plain, leaves over half of this development as open space. So, Jerry's Homes has had to take a hit on what they were able to develop on this property because of the change to the flood maps. There isn't really any way to develop without raising flood elevations unless we stick to the smaller parcels that we now have shown. So, Jerry's Homes has in essence lost, I think it's 11 single-family homes in the townhome parcel that they were going to develop previously. So, and this really isn't a change in lot sizes compared to our previous PUD amendment. The previous PUD amendment was all 80-foot lots, but there was some lots within the original PUD amendment that were less than the 80-foot as well. So, we're not really changing lot sizes from what we had previously. In that, we had a few lots that were just under the requirements. Now, are you ready for any questions for me?
Yeah. Questions from the Commission? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands here. If anyone else want to speak in favor of this proposal? In favor of the applicant? Raise your hand. Roger Hall, he wants to speak.
Right now, you're just asking in favor, correct?
Right, in favor, yeah. If anyone want to speak in opposition or have concerns about this proposal? If you have concerns and you want to speak, please raise your hand.
Star nine, if, now we have Roger.
Yes, okay.
Roger, you have to press star six to unmute. There you go.
I guess our main concern is.
Okay, sir, please state your name and address.
Roger Hall and Janet Banter, 3009 East Peyton Avenue.
Thank you.
Our main concern is, we know that we're not top of progress, but we see here that there's plans for hooking us up to sewer. It's under the general notes. Item two.
Just a second, I'm getting there. Hold on. Does everybody see what he's referencing, number two here, where I have the pointer? Yes, this would have been a note that was already in the approved plan from early 2000s. Or actually, the amendment that came later when they allowed the parceling of the house to the west.
Madam Chair, this is Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. Mr. Hall, could you please clarify what your concern is regarding the note?
The note specifies that the utilities will be changed to connect to city sewer. Today, we have laterals.
And?
Even though we pay city sewer for stormwater and sewage, that's included in our water bill, but we have septic laterals. It says we shall be reconstructed into a proposed public improvements. I, I guess.
This is when they would do this project, that they would, and put the utilities in, that they would make those services available. So what, you're, you're not wanting to see that happen?
Well, is it going to be a charge to this property or to us?
That would have been something they negotiated when they sold off the, the parcel. I guess I would have Melissa or Jay answer that question.
Okay, can the applicant come back on, Melissa Hills?
Uh, yes, this is Melissa again. I, if Jay is on, Eric, he would know this. I, I don't actually have the answer. Because I don't, I'm not privy to what negotiations took place between Jerry's Homes and the resident at the time, the, that the parcel, at the time we did the platter survey for these parcels. Jay's gonna have to speak to that because I just don't know the answer.
Is he online?
He was online. I don't see him on here now.
No, I did see his name earlier, but we do have a hand up. I'm not sure who this number is.
What's the phone number?
Oh, that's wrong.
Yeah, this is, this is Jay Cowan.
Okay, Jay. And your address?
Yeah, that.
Your address?
Um, Jay Cowan with Jerry's Homes, 3900 West Town Parkway, Suite 100, West Des Moines, Iowa, 50266.
Okay, thanks, Jay. Go ahead.
Um, I, I cannot speak to this. I'd have to do some research on it. Unfortunately, it was, these negotiations and procedures were performed well before I started working for Jerry's Homes. I think, Eric, did you say around 2005, maybe? I do remember seeing some information on a purchase agreement. So I'd have to dig into that and see exactly what the agreements are. But kind of from what I'm gathering, and, and I don't know if Melissa can confer to this, we will make these services available. So they will be stubbed, but they will be, not be connected. Is that, is that correct?
Madam Chair, this is Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. Think our expectation when this PUD was approved was that the existing house and the new houses would connect to city services, urban services, which would include sewer service. So, you know, it appears that this is a private issue between the owner of that lot and the developer. But all the properties are still within the PUD. And there's been no change proposed to the existing notes on this PUD regarding this matter. So from a staff perspective, we do believe that, you know, we, we ask that when a single family house is within 300 feet of a sewer, that it connect to sanitary sewer service if their septic fails. And so I guess those would be options. But at this point, the, there's been no change proposed to the existing PUD regarding that note. And so it really appears to be a private matter between Jerry's Homes and the owner. Thank you.
Yeah, and the other clarification is that the fees that he pays are based on his water usage. And when you're on septic, that's reduced because of, of the amount that goes into, that would go into the, the sanitary system. But those fees are for, for the city wide and regional systems and upkeep and maintenance. So, you know, if they're not a direct beneficiary, you know, that everybody in this, every property owner in the city pays those fees.
Well, thanks for that clarification. All right. Is there anyone else who would have concerns? It's time to close the public hearing. Discussion from the commission. I think Mike's clarification was very important. Discussion? Motion?
Jan, this is Greg Jones, All Move Staff.
Thanks, Greg. Um, all right, Tyler?
Johnny Asobar? Yes. Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chunga?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
And Will Page?
Yes.
The motion carries 14-0.
Thanks, Tyler. We're ready for item number 12. Item number 12.
Madam Chair, I believe item number 11 needs to go first.
Oh. Oh, you're right. Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, this is Eric, Eric Lundie again, item, doing item number 11. There was, I think, three individuals that wanted to speak to this. So I'll present it quickly. This is the request from Grayslake Apartments, which is their, their business name, but they have an LLC, Axiom Grayslake. I believe Michael Bleeker is on this call representing the owner. Because Eric Anderson was not able to be part of this. So they are asking for design alternatives to allow placement of new trash enclosures in the front yard area along Southwest 23rd Street. This is an overall picture of the complex. So you have these eight buildings with apartments that it's existed. It's just south of the AIB campus area that's now a planned unit development, Village at Grayslake. These are photos. You can see there's already containers placed in these locations without, without enclosures. This is looking from Southwest 23rd to the east at the south end. Then this is looking from the center off of Southwest 23rd to the southeast. That, that enclosure areas is, you know, difficult to see. It's back here. This is looking at an area in the center. This is another, this is an existing enclosure area. And then the other enclosure is right here. Or would be right here. This is another container that's been placed, but in the location, but does not have an enclosure around it. Overall, there's some other things going on here that were touched on in the staff report. There's currently enclosures in these areas that are going to be displaced due to the city's project to run sidewalk along the west side of Fluor Drive. And so the city's acquisitions are, are causing a couple of situations. One of them would be placed over here, and one would be placed here. Those are not of the subject of this appeal, or this request for design alternative. There's another trash container that gets placed here, that they're going, that will be enclosed. But again, that's not visible from either street, and that's not the subject of this. The two that are in question are this one up at the north end of the parking on the west side, and at the south end of the parking on the west side. And then there's existing enclosure right here that you saw in the photo. And then this is Southwest 23rd. You saw the foot, the playground. So you can see the, the distance here. They have fairly limited options. They could have, they could put other enclosures, you know, interior, but part of the, part of, I think what they're trying to do is get a good distribution on the, on the enclosures. This is the, the sketch of the exterior design. They are also showing how this would get landscaped. This weighed pretty strongly into staff's review of this. And, and the, the robustness of the proposed landscaping, I think, makes this a lot more palatable, given that they're visible from public views. This is a, of example of the, the material that would be the composite board. This is commonly allowed as an alternate design with existing built multifamily or multi-household apartment complexes. So this is a, a good durable solution. This is the alternate design that gets proposed when existing apartments that have not had enclosures over the years are renewing their rental certificates. They generally are obligated to enclose their, their trash containers. And so this is the commonly accepted solution, the gates are metal. So staff reviewed this, looking at the criteria then for granting design alternatives. We believe it, it fulfills those. We believe it with the landscaping, it, putting the trash containers in these locations is not going to present an adverse impact to the neighborhood. So we do want to make sure that they follow the design that they're, that they're proposing. This is considered a, an alternative design documentation, the way the code reads. It's not a full blown site land for the, for the complex. It's really just for the purposes of the location of the enclosures. So that's why you see that reference to alternative design documentation. Are there any questions from?
For Eric?
We sent out cards, we don't send out cards with these, but we, when they get the notice, they can inquire with us. And we can provide them that information, which is probably why even a couple that want to speak to this.
Okay. Questions for Eric from the commission? Is the applicant online? Please raise your hand or star six. State your name and address, please.
It looks like Michael Bleeker's on, and he, he's unmuted now, so he can speak.
Okay.
Oh, Mike Bleeker, address is 100 Tri-State International Drive, Lincolnshire, Illinois, 60069.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Eric's presentation was very informative. We're really just looking to strategically place some new dumpster locations due to, it started with the whole floor drive reconstruction. And we started looking at the property as a whole. The locations that were there when we took over just over a year ago, were not ideally placed. They were causing overflow dumpsters because the distribution for the residents wasn't effective. So, so we've come up with these, we believe, locations that will make it better distribution for the resident access. And they're more strategic so that we won't be having unsightly dumpster overflowing the way we have it placed. So that's simply enough, the request, and we're in agreement with the staff's recommendation.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this applicant, this proposal? Okay. There's someone who wants to speak in, in opposition or has concerns? Yes, I see Tim Hickman and Manuel.
This is Tim Hickman, 2222 Willemere Drive. And I would like to, so Madam Chair and committee members, thank you for allowing our comments. The neighborhood has had a history of maintenance challenges with this property owner. And if you look at this property in the context, 20, Southwest 23rd Street is actually the entry to a couple of small neighborhoods, as well as my, so you can see Virginia Avenue, Glenwood Drive, and my small neighborhood on Willemere Drive immediately to the south of these properties. Their addresses are on Floor Drive. And historically, the properties have, have dealt with Southwest 23rd as a forgotten backyard condition, although to the neighbors, it is truly a front yard condition. The dumpsters in these parking lots are currently sitting open at the end of the parking lot. There is also a mostly unmaintained parking lot, asphalt parking lot to the extreme southwest corner of the property. So the general concerns of the neighborhood are that historically, this landowner has not done much to respond to the neighbors' concerns about general maintenance. And my concern specifically about the enclosures that are proposed is that both of these parking lots are sloped from a high side on the east, down to a low side on the west, and they surface drain across that sloped surface. And the proposed enclosure does not, I wouldn't really, I'm, I think calling this a sketch is a little bit of a, it's very complimentary to the drawing. I'm concerned that there's not enough information here to actually construct a decent trash enclosure. And frankly, the neighborhood is very dubious about the ability of this landowner to follow through with improving the current situation. So I would request that we see something a little bit more that at least accommodates for the true slope of the site to ensure that these are quality installations, and that the landscaping proposed is actually followed through and installed and maintained.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Hickman from the commission?
Hello, Tim, this is Greg Watier. Do you have any concerns with their proposed locations?
Okay, Tim, you need to unmute.
All right, Greg, thank you for your question. My perception of this is that the commission is being asked to, to do two things today, both to reduce what might typically be required by a new developer, which would be a masonry enclosure to the proposed composite siding and steel, and also to allow them to be located in the front yard between the buildings and Southwest 23rd. And I do think that's a bit of a double whammy to the neighborhood. There is virtually no landscaping currently between the buildings and the street, and no attempt by this owner to deal with this frontage as a front yard. And so dumpsters in the front yard just add to a perception of an ill-maintained property. So I am concerned about the fact that both the quality and the location are not a contribution to the character of the street that we are trying to improve.
Madam Chair, this is Eric Lundie. Clarification on something he said. The only thing in front of you is the location. Now, the commission can ask for enhanced conditions to mitigate the, the, the design alternative for the location. But, but with existing sites, the proposed construction and the landscaping meet what we would, we would allow. And so the, the other three locations they're proposing, you know, those would be allowed, and you wouldn't, those wouldn't be under review, for example.
Okay, thanks, Eric, for the clarification. Question? Questions for Mr. Hickman? Other questions? I see someone else who'd like to speak in opposition of this proposal, Manuel. Siprat?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Very good. My name is Manny Siprat and my preference is 2229 Willamere, which is very much adjacent to the subject property. I have owned that property for 30 years. I've had concerns about this property. I've called property managers there over the years about their lack of maintenance. So I I I believe that there are new owners that bought it a year ago, but we have no control over what owners will be there tomorrow or a year from now or 10 years from now. So whatever we do here needs to sort of maximize the potential for proper maintenance of this property. I believe the owner did mention they have or have had problems with overflowing trash fence, which is very evident. As Mr. Hickman mentioned, there is very minimal, if any, landscaping along 23rd. And although 23rd is the backside of this property, it's very much the front side of the property for us residents who are on the west side of the property. 23rd is 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 a very used road. There, as Tim mentioned, a number of resident communities around it. There's been a history of abandoned vehicles, poorly asphalted parking, and very poor maintenance of their vegetation or landscape along the southwest corner of this property. So I mentioned that as an example of the lack of maintenance of this property and that we should do everything we can to ensure or and make it easier for them to properly maintain this. I I see the drawings of the proposed enclosures. They look questionable to me. Unfortunately, I'm not able to read the landscape map. I'm a late person, so I don't know if that's adequate or not. I encourage the commission to to do whatever they can to help this property owner maintain the property in better condition than it has been over the years.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Siprat from the commission? Questions? Okay, I see another hand who'd like to speak about this item, Margaret Smith.
Yes, hello, can you hear me okay? Okay, I live at 2301 Virginia Avenue. And so just going along with Tim and what Manuel said, this is very much the front of my yard. I live right there. You've got it. And so I see this every day. I have made several complaints as well about the trash receptacles being there, not being maintained. And I guess I'm just kind of concerned again because the locations that they proposed are very open to the street. And I'm concerned about the maintenance of them, that it won't be any better than what is currently in place. And I just hope that we kind of can encourage them to really look into maintaining this better and seeing if there is any better proposed location or if there is any way to put something up between these receptacles in the street so that they aren't unsightly or take value away from our neighborhood.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Smith from the commission? Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? Okay, we'll have the applicant come back and address some of these concerns.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I appreciate the feedback. We are a new owner just over a year and we recognize a lot of the deficiencies that were on the property when we acquired it. We have a lot of capital projects going on that we've done during 2020 that, you know, we had a tough time with COVID and getting stuff done, but we got a lot done. And we have a lot of projects in 2021 here that are major capital projects. And we, you know, we were addressing the parking lots. We did do an overlay of the main parking lot and fix all the asphalt issues and seal coated and restrike. So we we are well aware of those issues that are still pending on that southwest corner parking lot. And we have plans to improve that. I I I really appreciate the comments about that being a front yard to that neighborhood. As new owners, you don't think of that, you're getting other things done. So that feedback is important to us as neighbors. And we did take down that fence around the playground and we hope to do some new signage as well. So we we have plans for major improvements and we have a good reputation as owners in other communities. This is our first property in the Des Moines area and we hope to to do more and be be good owners. So I'd just like to say that we looked at this from that standpoint. We are limited to where we can place them and we recognize the two locations out on facing the 23rd Street will need maybe some more substantial landscaping to block that. And that's part of the plan outside of the drawing there. So I appreciate the feedback and and we're open to to those ideas and thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of the applicant, please? Sir, this is Will Page here and I'm looking at the the landscaping plan that you submitted with your application. Could call it, yeah, there it is. I heard a concern from one of the neighbors that discussed the project about the difficulty of understanding this because of its design and so forth. And quite frankly, typically, when we get a landscape drawing for a project that is as large as this, it's a professional design that we can see in quite a bit of detail as opposed to what we're looking at right now. So my question is, since there are concerns about this, would you be willing to go ahead and have a professional landscape architect give us a drawing of these areas so we could have a better sense of what they're going to be looking like?
We, so we had those drawn according to what the city required. And we will stick to that code if it's approved. This was a a small landscape contractor that that we that works for us. And so it was sufficient for this application process. And I hope that, you know, that it will be sufficient for for the city to use for this approval. I I I guess I'd like to know more what the concern is of actually having a physical picture versus, I mean, because this encompasses what they want us to do. It's pretty specific and other than actual hiring an architect to do a drawing, this is what we were allowed to submit.
Jan, can I make a comment?
Go ahead, please.
This is Greg Jones. Will, I appreciate you defending landscape architects to do a drawing, but we don't have to do them all. I completely understand this drawing. It makes complete sense to me. So if I can help you understand what it is, I'd be glad to.
Well, is it appropriate to have a discussion among the commissioners now or or not?
I'm just offering that to you. We can talk later.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, maybe we can in the discussion part. Well, thank you very much. It's time to close the public hearing. And now it is time for discussion from the commission. So how do we feel about this proposal?
Jan, this is Caleb Burksen. I would just say that there was a note about the the slope of the parking lot, maybe not working out with the dumpster enclosure design. And looking at kind of the drawings available, it appears that the gates, you know, it doesn't seem like it would really work very well, especially in the northern lot there. So I would be curious if they they've, you know, thought through that with the topography and exactly how everything would fit together.
Good comment. Can you answer that, Eric, or?
Well, the enclosure would have to be the height of the container at a minimum. So right now that looks pretty level. It is a little bit higher. The 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 base of it is a little higher than the street. But if that was enclosed, you wouldn't see the, you know, you wouldn't see the container. So then you go back to the the plantings, there would be the the mock oranges around that that would be a shrubbery. And then there, right next to it, there would be a shade tree, a hackberry, and then perennials around that. So, you know, without, you know, a rendering or something, it's hard to describe it. But but from our perspective, that's following the requirement that we would have in any other location on the site. Because even internally to the site, we want them screened, you know, properly. And then and then they're providing a pedestrian access kind of they didn't put a gate, they put kind of a a walk around, which might be more functional for people to walk in and and be able to put their trash into the container. But it's the way it's designed, it would screen from from many views into the the site. And then the they have the metal framed gates. It's it's not as durable as as a, you know, masonry enclosure that you would see with a new project. But that's fulfilling the the normal standard again, this being in the front yard. You know, the neighbors are expressing concern about what they're going to have to look at. So right now they're looking at an enclosure, which, by the way, you know, that's been given to the neighborhood inspection folks so that they understand that those are already in place without enclosures. So regardless of till the enclosure gets put there, they're going to be subject to enforcement. I I can put it on the next photo too, if you want, to kind of give you the my perspective on the the south one. I'm I'm quite a bit higher and I'm actually at the edge of that other parking lot. When I was in the street, I didn't even see the 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 container. So from the, I had to drive into this parking lot. So when you look at the the aerial, I I pulled in to this area right here to be able to see that. But when I was in the street, this kind of rises up like a berm. And it's very difficult to see this location from the street. Now, if you're on a house up here, I don't know, those might be able to see down into this area better than that. But from the street perspective, that was difficult to see. But again, that enclosure should go all the way around the container.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Eric. Further discussion from the commission? Jan, this is, go ahead, Dory.
Okay, this is Dory and I I just would like, Greg offered earlier to talk about with his expertise in landscape architecture, that exactly how high will these plantings be? Thanks, Greg.
The mock orange that are right next to it are a shrub, so they should be about as high as the enclosure is. The the perennials on the outside are lower, so at least it's layered when you look at it. And then hackberry is an overstory tree, so it really won't provide screening, but it'll provide some contrast and shade for other purposes. So I personally, I think it meets whatever criteria we have for screening.
Greg, this is Will Page here. Excuse me. You know, I'm looking at four or maybe five different sites for for the the planting plan. And is the drawing that we've been given, I mean, and these sites that we're looking at are different in terms of scale and location, slope and so forth. Is the drawing that we see for the planting plan sufficient in terms of being site specific for these various different locations?
I guess I I took it as kind of a representative example and they might have to adjust them depending on the site. But if you use that number of plants and you screen it like you do here, I think that it should work. Again, we're talking about two of these on the 23rd Street side and and I mean, that's really our purview at this point.
Okay, other comments? Carolyn, were you, did you want to say something?
Yes, I I was just intrigued by the comment from Mr. Hickman regarding the requirements that as an existing home or an existing owner versus a new developer, that the ability to put dumpsters in front yards and not have as much landscaping as new developers. I just, I guess I just wanted to address that really quickly, or maybe Eric can clarify that.
Yeah, so they're not, you know, the landscaping is new with the new code. So we didn't used to have a landscaping provision for enclosures. So they're following the new the new standard with with any of the new ones they're putting in. The difference with existing sites, we have a alternate design so that it's not a huge investment to comply with getting screening because there's so many pre-existing apartment buildings around the city. And when we go to get rental code, you know, if they have to build, you know, six or seven enclosures, you know, that's over $100,000 just to comply with a standard. So so we've, throughout the city, existing locations have the option of the the alternate design. Some of this is coming through rental code side of things too. What's being done here, you know, if this were built new, certainly we wouldn't even have the parking on that side of the building. We would have the buildings to the street and the parking would be internal and it probably wouldn't be an issue. What we're faced with here is a retrofit of what's going on. So they're trying to increase the number of enclosures and and container locations to get better distribution so they don't have the issues with the overflow. They can be serviced, you know, more readily for the neighbors liking, I would think, too, but yeah.
So we did that on behalf of?
Existing site versus, you know, newly built is is different.
But we created that on behalf of to support neighborhoods.
Well, yeah, we wanted to get compliance with with existing sites that didn't even have enclosures. They just had the the containers sitting out, you know, unabated.
Okay. Does that help, Carolyn?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I I'm, I understand where the neighbors are coming from and I I would hope that we would support them as much as we can without being, without harming the the owner. So, okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Do I have a motion?
Jan, this is Greg Jones, all moves staff.
Okay. We've got a motion. Tyler?
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Brows?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard? Lisa Howard?
Yes. Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jennison?
Carolyn, yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Excuse me, sorry, can you restate what the motion is?
Moves staff.
No.
Abby Chungit.
Yes.
Rocky Spazato.
Yes.
Will Page.
No.
Johnny Alcevar.
Yes.
Motion carries 12-2.
Thank you, Tyler. We're ready for item number 12. Bert?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll be presenting number 12. Can you see my screen? So, item number 12 is a request from Wesley Retirement Services. It's for a property located at 3520 Grand Avenue and 401 37th Street, and it would allow for review and approval of an amendment to the Wesley Acres PUD. They're proposing a series of nine amendments, which I'll go through here shortly. So here's the location of the PUD. It's located on the south side of Grand Avenue, just to the east of 37th Street. Initially, they were proposing to add a driveway from 37th Street, but that has since been removed from their plan. As I mentioned, they are proposing a series of nine amendments to the PUD, so I'm going to go through those right now. The first would be the construction of a new addition on the north side of the building complex, which would create a new main entrance for the facility and would allow for the reconfiguration of this parking here along Grand Avenue. If you can see where my cursor is, here is the location of that addition. The second amendment would be to put in a small addition right here by the letter J, and it would be for a new west entrance. The third change, or the third revision, is probably the most controversial, and that is the addition of a new pool and auditorium in this area right here. As you can see, there are two or three single-family residences just about 100 feet to the west of here, who you'll be hearing from later, who have concerns with this addition here. The fourth amendment or revision would be to construct a new terrace and a new retention pond along Grand Avenue. So it'd be some new landscaping features in the front yard. The fifth change would be to add eight parking spaces right here along the west edge of the PUD. As I mentioned earlier, they were originally proposing to put a driveway to 37th Street, but that's since been eliminated, and they're just wanting to add these eight parking spaces. And if you look where my cursor is here, this is the building known as the Bolton Building, which is on the Wesley complex. These eight spaces would be closer to 37th Street than that building. And as I'll get to in the staff recommendation, staff is recommending that these eight spaces not be added. The sixth revision would be to revise the central courtyard right here around the letter O. The seventh would be to allow the expansion of the sale of service, of alcohol service within the existing building. Previously, there was a daycare and child or preschool facility within the building, so the PUD required the areas where alcohol would be served to stay far away from those areas. However, since the daycare and the preschool are no longer there, they are wanting to expand the alcohol service to all the dining areas within the building. The eighth change would be to eliminate the daycare and the preschool use from the PUD. And then the ninth change would be to update the list of permitted accessory uses that are allowed by the PUD. I'm switching to sheet, the front page of the PUD. And in this area down here, they describe what accessory uses are allowed. And I want to point out that these accessory uses are only allowed so long as the primary use of the property continues as a retirement community. So the neighbors are worried that these uses would be allowed if the retirement community would ever go away. That would not be possible by this amendment. And all of these accessory uses are typical, typically of what you would find within a retirement community, and all of these are actually happening today. So this PUD amendment is really just legitimizing those existing uses. And then they also have some notes here that limit and put some controls on the sale of alcohol, and these conditions that they've put on here are really standard to what the Board of Adjustment would put on, if they ever, or if they were to request a conditional use for such. But since it's a PUD, the zoning's controlled by this document today. Now I'll show you some elevations of what their proposed additions would look like. And again, this one at the top of your screen is the largest addition on that west side. This is the one that the neighbors have concerns about. And these are the two smaller northeast entrance and the west entrance. And then here are some 3D renderings. And while you're looking at these, I'll also mention that since this is a PUD, any development site plan will also have to come before the Plan and Zoning Commission for review and approval. So tonight, the commission's considering the zoning for the property, and then at a later date, the commission will have to consider the site plan for these additions. And I'll just take you through some photos to just familiarize you with the site. This is the main tower along Grand Avenue. This is moving back on the site along the east driveway. This is, now we're back on the west side. This is the location of the proposed bigger addition on the west side. And then this is looking at that west property line towards the houses immediately to the west, and I believe the owners of these homes are on this meeting, so you'll be hearing from them this evening. Now we move over to 37th Street. This is the garage that's on the condominium property immediately to the north, which is at the corner of 37th and Grand Avenue. They have a below-grade garage here. And the proposed parking addition along 37th Street, if you see where my cursor is here, that's again that garage. The new parking would be within this area here, so it would be no closer to the front property line to this existing garage. But as I mentioned earlier, staff's recommending that the parking be limited to be no closer than the existing building. And this is that Bolton Building that's along 37th Street. And then this is looking back towards the north. If you see where I'm dragging my mouse, that's that below-grade garage. And then those eight spaces would be located in this area right here. And then this is just looking more straight north from the, across the Bolton property. As far as the staff recommendation goes, we do believe that the amendment is appropriate. We recognize that Wesley Acres needs to make some modifications and some changes in order to stay relevant and in order to maintain their use. So we are sympathetic to that. We have recommended a few conditions that we feel should minimize any impact on the adjoining property owners, and I'll just go through those quickly. We've recommended that any stucco meet the requirements necessary to be considered as a major facade material, just want to be sure it's true stucco and not ephes. We've recommended that any brick shall be full-dimensional brick and not thin brick. We've recommended that a note to state any refuse container will be within an enclosure constructed of masonry walls that match the primary building. Number four, we've said that the off-street parking on the western portion of the PUD shall not extend any closer to that front property line than 37th Street than the Wesley Bolton Building, and shall not include a drive approach from 37th Street. So this is one of the two conditions that the applicant doesn't agree with. They would like, they agree with not having the drive approach, but they would like to strike the first part of this condition, so that they could have those eight extra parking spaces. Condition five, we've recommended that all lighting use a full cutoff directional lighting to prevent glare and spill over onto the adjoining streets and abutting end neighborhood-owned lots. Six, we've recommended that any new parking area be landscaped in accordance with the requirements applicable to the N3, NX3 district, which is our most intense multifamily residential district. And this would include the requirement of side and rear buffer plantings, which staff believes would lessen the impact on the adjoining residential properties. Seven, we've said any future PUD development site planned shall require the certification by a licensed engineer that the stormwater basin on the southern portion of the site functions as designed. Eight, provision of a note that states any sale or service of alcohol shall be in accordance with the necessary permit obtained through the city clerk and issued by a city council. And then nine, that they comply with all administrative review comments of the PUD conceptual plan. And again, item, or conditions four and six are really the two that the applicant does not agree to. And next, I'm going to scroll through the comments. As you'll see, we have quite a few comments tonight. And for the sake of time, I'm going to scroll through these fairly quickly. I'll try to summarize them as best I can. If I ever get ahead of anybody and you want me to slow down or take a step back, just feel free to speak up. So we got about 14 comment cards back, and the comment cards we received, for the most part, are all very supportive. We have this one here from Judy Milligan, who had concerns about the driveway to 37th Street. As I mentioned, that's not proposed any longer. And we did mail out the notices twice since they had been continued. So you might see some repeat names on these cards. And next, I'm going to show you some emails that the applicant has submitted in support of their proposal. The first was one from Margaret Stewart in support of Wesley Acres. And just, I still have about 70 pages to get through, so I'm going to try to keep moving quickly here. But if there's any more you want, if you want me to spend any more time on anyone, just let me know. And when the people are speaking tonight, I'll try to pull up their letters and have them on the screen while they're speaking. And this was the CEO and president of Wesley Acres replying to Margaret's email. And this was just a letter that Margaret Stewart had mailed to the Neighborhood Association back in 2019, when Des Moines University was announcing their plans to relocate. The next 10, I'm going to go through real quickly. These are emails and statements that Wesley submitted from residents of their complex in support of their proposal. This first one is from Sue Terry in support. This next one was from Glenn Baughman, also in support of the building revisions. The next one is from Helen Smith in support. She's looking forward to the improvements. The next one is from Ben Campney. Then we have one from Beth Campney. And this one here, these two residents didn't have email, but they submitted statements, Linda Young and Lou Fitch, both in support and expressing excitement for the project. We had a handwritten letter from Carol Cottle. And then another email from Uriel Pembel. And the last email from the residents is from Jeanette Davis. Then the applicant wanted me to show this email from Mike Simonson, who had initially expressed reservations about the project, but after taking, I believe they had some conversations, he was able to issue the letter of support. And this was just a stormwater diagram that they had provided to Mike Simonson to help ease his concerns, and another aerial photo that they provided Mike Simonson. And this was his initial letter, where he had concerns about the parking encroaching onto 37th Street. And I can't speak for Mike Simonson, but my understanding is he still doesn't want the parking to extend any closer to 37th Street than the Bolton Building. All right, so now we're going to get into some of the opposition. We have this letter here from the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association in opposition. And like I said, I'll show these letters at length when these people are speaking to the commission tonight. Have another one from Eaton Young, another one from Mike Fitzpatrick and Cynthia O'Brien, and a three-page letter here from Scott and Kristen Carlson. And they've also submitted some photos of what they would see from their backyard. They're one of the two or three houses that would be most impacted by the proposed addition. So these are photos that they submitted. And then Kevin McPhee is another immediate, he owns the property immediately to the west and to the south of the Bolton Building. And he submitted a presentation here, which I'll let him go over when he addresses the Right, and then we have another letter or email in opposition from Joe Kadelman. Another letter of concern from Christine and Terry Hines. And then this email is in support. There are residents over on 31st Street who are supportive. And then we have the email from Craig and Nick Ibsen, opposed. Another email and some photos from Lon Stiger in opposition. And then we have a letter here from Rachelle Quiner in opposition, and she's going to be speaking tonight, going over this Lincoln Place Court, which is where, which used to be where Wesley Acres is today. And then a letter here from Mark Quiner. All right, and then the consent map. Several of these people did submit opposition, however, they only show up on this map if they submit this, or something that's been signed. So we have the signature from Scott Carlson. I reached out to the McPhees and the Fitzpatricks today to get something with their signature, so that when it goes to city council, they could be colored red on the map. And then just quickly showed the neighborhood outreach letter that Wesley Life had sent to the residents, and then this was their neighborhood outreach summary. So I know I covered a lot. Was there any questions for me before we hear from the applicant?
Questions for Bert?
Questions for Bert?
Bert, this is Abby. I just want a clarification on the staff recommendation number seven about the stormwater basin on the southern portion. It says any future PUD final development site plan would require certification by a licensed engineer. So I assume when you say future final development site plan, that would be the next phase of this after.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, is there any indication right now that that is not operating as it should? I wasn't able to read the full letter from Mike Simonson, sorry, was it?
Well, there was some speculation from the neighbors that it wasn't functioning as it should. But I know their engineers have met with Adam Prilip, one of the city engineers. And I think Adam Prilip was comfortable that the basin could be modi- it would only take slight modifications for it to be functioning as designed. So he helped me craft that condition that we just require that certification with that site plan at the next phase.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is the applicant online? Please state your name and any address, please. Okay, I see two.
Yeah, it's Darren Schlopko.
Okay. Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Sure, you can hear me fine now? Okay, great. Yeah, my name is Darren Schlopko. I'm the Vice President of Development and Construction for Wesley Life. My address is 12817 Cardinal Lane in Urbandale, Iowa. And I want to thank everybody for the opportunity tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the entire commission so we could present this project. I'd also like to thank Bert for all of his help and all the city staff that's assisted us over the last several weeks to be able to present. I'm also joined tonight by some of our design consultants, specifically David Benz and Michael Gaunt from Bishop Engineering, who can address some of the stormwater questions that may come up, as well as any of the landscaping questions that might be asked. And Don Rolf with Pope Architects, who's the lead architect on this project for anything related to the constructability or the new amenities that are planned. As many of you know, Wesley Acres is a special place for our organization. It's the birthplace of our mission that started 74 years ago in the Chamberlain Home that's located on this campus. Wesley Acres serves nearly 1,000 seniors on an annual basis and has just over 300 full-time residents. Wesley Acres has a storied history of being an organization that serves the needs of, you know, Des Moines community and specifically the residents of this neighborhood. And we also serve a number of non-residents throughout the year, providing space for them to use our campus for neighborhood meetings, voting, board meetings, club gatherings, while also having members of the neighborhood participate in our wellness programming, which is known as the Well, our Well Ahead Program, as well as any other educational outreach programs that we offer at Wesley Acres. The project specifically that you're looking at tonight is an investment by us that we're making in this community to enhance our wellness programs, our culinary experiences, as well as a complete and total restoration of the Chamberlain House. And we hope that this is the right plan to position Wesley Acres to serve residents, not only now, but for the next 20 years. The restoration of the Chamberlain is important to us, of course, because we want to preserve our heritage. But several months ago, I attended a neighborhood meeting for Harry Bookie's project just down to the west on Grand. And one of the attendees stood up and spoke about how important it was for them to be able to see some of the classic architecture of these buildings and maybe homes that are along Grand. So it was important to us to create an environment by which we can share our history with, with folks that aren't necessarily residents, but maybe guests of residence or someone within the neighborhood. So the restoration of the Chamberlain will serve as an outreach for that with outdoor seating and other amenities that go along with it. And we, that really resonated with me and with our team to make sure that we were doing this and promoting the historical nature of the Chamberlain Home within the neighborhood. You'll, you saw in the arc, the elevations that were shown that the architecture that we're starting to incorporate, the new areas is really to pay a tribute to the Chamberlain, more of a Tudor style, maybe more of a modern Tudor kind of element that'll allow to integrate more with the architecture of the neighborhood as well. The current campus has been added on to multiple times over the years, but we feel that this is a direction we need to go in order to continue to tie that aspect of the classic architecture back into this campus. Let's see. On the more technical side of the design process, our number one objective was stormwater, and I appreciate the early question asking about that. Actually, what Bishop Engineering has done is designed a system now that will actually discharge less than half of the water that we are currently discharging through a new water feature on the front part of the property that Bert showed in his original plan. And a small expansion to the existing detention area that's back in the wooded area. So a huge win for everybody. It was, it was a number one thing on our list to make sure we address that right away so that that wouldn't be an issue for anyone south of us in the neighborhoods to the south, that is. We started this project with more than 45% green space on the campus. We are still above that percentage with our current plan. We're making a significant investment in landscaping throughout the grounds, as well as buffering our campus from neighboring properties, specifically Kevin Mcfee and Scott Carlson's properties. I'm sure they'll speak to that and some things that happened multiple years ago. I've been with Wesley Life two and a half years. I can't speak to what happened in the past, but I can tell you that everything that I've committed to and we've committed to thus far, we have done and we intend to do. So I just want to make sure that we were very transparent in our efforts to create some really nice green spaces and bufferings between us and the adjacent residential properties. We've evaluated parking concerns. We are still asking to include the eight spots. Those eight spots will relieve a little bit of pressure, mostly at the Bolton for guests and residents there, but also for our auxiliary uses for the neighborhood and for the community, just to ensure that we do have all the parking we need to continue to be that great neighbor that we are and have been for, you know, over 70 years. We feel strongly, we've taken every question and concern from the neighborhood into consideration. We've met multiple times with Scott and Kevin specifically, the president of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association, other members. We've done Zoom meeting, a Zoom meeting to show them the whole entire plan. We have made agreements to do the landscaping as well as to not develop into the woods to the south. We have no intention to do that. We have no desire to do that. It's part of our, our campus and we like it just like it is. So there's, there's no intentions for us to do that. I think lastly, I would say that, again, I feel like we've listened to the questions and concerns. We've addressed every single one to date. There are some specifics about the, the building, the new buildings in question, I and H, that we can get into a little bit further because I know that that'll be a topic of discussion. But yeah, again, we're excited about this project. It keeps our campus relevant for a number of years, especially when competition continues to become, you know, more prevalent in the market. And, you know, we feel that this is a fixture piece for us and this is our history and our heritage. Thus, we are making this significant investment for our residents now and into the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions of the applicant? From the commission? Okay, who, who else would like to speak in favor of the applicant? In favor of this item? Please raise your hand. Okay.
51, yep.
Okay.
So Carol Maher, Maher should be able to talk.
Hi, Carol Maher, 701 Polk Boulevard, Des Moines, Iowa. I think it looks really great. I just have one request. There's an awful lot of concrete around there. I'm wondering if you consider finding a place for some bike racks so people that may want to come to visit residents could ride their bike versus using all those parking spaces and maybe be a little bit more green in arriving to visit. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this proposal? Okay. Who would like to speak in opposition? Who would like to voice some concerns? Go ahead and raise your hand. We'll take you in order.
Looks like Nicholas Larson is the first. He should be able to unmute.
Yeah, thanks Bert for helping monitor this. Okay. Please state your name and address. Nick Larson.
I'm trying to unmute him, but it says, I need, I'm going to try this. Nick, are you able to unmute yourself now?
Oh, okay. All right. You guys, you guys reading me loud and clear now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hey, good evening, commissioners. Thanks for being here. Nicholas Larson, President Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association, 127 34th Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50312. So I'll just, I'll get right to it, speaking out in opposition. Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association, you know, has had ongoing contact with Wesley Acres regarding their PUD conceptual plan through face-to-face meetings, phone calls and emails. I want to thank them for taking the time to meet with neighbors and delay their project so that we can have a better understanding of what the true impact of this development will be on our neighborhood. I believe that we have found more common ground than expected and are willing to enter into a written agreement with Wesley Acres concerning use restrictions related to no further development south of its property and proper maintenance of its detention pod. Where we have reached an impasse with Wesley Acres is concerning the development on its property's west side, adjacent to homes on 37th Street. Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association's primary mission is to uphold and protect the safety, value and historical integrity of our Greenwood Historic Neighborhood for current residents and future generations to come. We believe that the current architectural design encroaching on our neighbors on 37th Street, which includes an extension of parking to the west towards 37th Street and the addition of a 40-foot tall pool complex attached to an addition behind these homes threatens these core values. As mentioned, Wesley has communicated with us and we appreciate their transparency. We hear their concern for the expansion of their business. Recognizing this, we believe that by choosing to establish their business in this area, they realize the restrictions that would present themselves over time. As a neighborhood, we recognize the asset of Wesley Acres to our community and also consider ourselves an asset to them. Our stance, which is to preserve the integrity of our neighborhood, is not done out of a desire to say no to every proposed project. On the contrary, we are taking these steps to ensure the preservation of this area for all of us that are privileged to work and live in this historic area. Our hope is that Wesley Acres would consider moving the proposed addition to the other side of their campus. Making this decision in order to improve the bottom line of a tax-exempt commercial entity is not justification to diminish the residential aspect of our neighborhood and potentially decrease the property values of the adjacent residential properties. The hardships presented to many of our residents this year and the face of the pandemic have been great, though certainly not unique. The decrease of property value for our residents is a real threat to their most valuable asset. And it's for these reasons that we ask the request before you be denied. Thank you for your time here this evening.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Larson? From the commission? Okay, we'll go to the next person with the hand up, Kevin Mcfee. State your name and address, please.
Hi. 321 37th Street, Des Moines, Iowa. You know, we moved here in 2018 and we looked at dozens of houses and we jumped all over the opportunity to move in this neighborhood because of the stature of the neighborhood, the beauty of it and its historical qualities. And as a homeowner in this neighborhood, we believe that we are preserving this home that is over 100 years old for hopefully another 100 years. Unfortunately, this is the second time in the two-plus years that I've lived here that we've been in front of the PNZ facing a threat to the core values of the neighborhood. And I am certainly not against all development, but if the development is going to impact the neighborhood or property values, I believe I have to speak up. And we do appreciate the dialogue with Wesley Acres. But this proposed H and I, which you've seen, is going to directly impact the way we can use our house and our property values. We would welcome others to come take a walk through. There were some pictures and if you could go to the presentation that I submitted, I think a picture is worth a thousand, a thousand words. And if you go to the next one, my home is the Mcfee home. These red Xs are trees that are going to be removed, which would do some buffering. Item six in the staff recommendation talks about buffering for the parking, but nothing resulting in the landscaping that will buffer this big addition. If you go to slide three or that page three, this 3D visual, I think is really impactful. I know there have been a few changes, but if you look at the height of that and the westward facing and note the glass reflection, you know, that is directly in behind our backyard. The red or the blue star is our patio and is a frame of reference. So not only does it come further west and adds height, that thing will add further intensity of usage through people coming in and using it. And so we're very concerned about that. You know, this has two bedrooms, our living area, our outdoor patio and living space, which again is directly behind our home. So if you go to the next picture, again, from our second floor master bedroom, you'll see kind of a rough visualization. That building will take up the blue space. It will fill the top of the buildings. If you go to the next page, again, we don't have a 3D visual from ours. These are my crude skills. But, you know, that is going to further dominate and encroach on our property. If you go on to the next page and you look at from the ground level, you know, again, blue space, trees gone, big glass building. Yeah, thank you, in its stead. And then on the next slide page, you can see it at night. You know, we invested in some dim downward-facing patio lighting. That red spot is going to be that glass window. It's going to be lit through the night. And so our ability to continue to use our patio is going to be disrupted. On the next page, you know, Darren mentioned there's been lots of discussions. There's been some reconsideration. We had suggested flipping the big building so that instead of directly behind our- We had suggested flipping the big building so that instead of directly behind our house, it's behind the Bolton. There are a few minor changes, but again, at the end of the day, they're not sufficient to buffer our property from this new building. We have seen landscaping that is buffering and we appreciate that, but you know, you're replacing 100-year-old trees and open air with new landscaping, which just is not gonna be sufficient. So we would be supportive of something that is smaller, ideally elsewhere on the property. You know, I read some of the residents' views. Of course, they would like these amenities, but this is unnecessary to allow Wesley Acres to fulfill their mission. It's a nice-to-have and of course, it would be beautiful, but not at the cost of our property value and the ability to use our property. So, you know, and in closing, you know, the next slide, you know, what if it was your home? And we've asked that question when folks have come tour this and, you know, there's not a good response. So I appreciate the time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, we'll go to the next person.
Looks like Kathy Furman.
Kathy?
She should be able to unmute herself now?
Yes, Kathy Furman, 4000 Ingersoll Avenue. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a member of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association and I'm currently serving as the Ward Three representative to the Des Moines Stormwater Infrastructure Committee. I'm here to address the impact that Wesley Acres has on the watershed that our association is located in. I start by saying that Wesley Acres serves an important role in our community and I hope that before a PUD is approved, a compromise can be found that meets their expansion needs as well as being respectful of the needs of our association and its neighbors. When a person drives or walks past Wesley Acres on Grand Avenue, they see a beautifully manicured stately campus. The part of the campus that is not as visible is the detention basin located to the south of the buildings. This basin was originally designed to detain storm water that flows from the hard surfaces on their property. This basin and one located on the Des Moines University property historically have not been maintained and at times, the restriction plate on the Wesley Acres basin is not in place, which means that no water is being detained. The result is that water flows from these properties at such a volume and with such an intensity that the manhole covers on Elmwood are dislodged and move away from the hole they cover. More importantly, this flow has resulted in two of our residents losing their homes and the city of Des Moines losing part of its tax base. If and when the Wesley Acres PUD is approved, I am advocating for the attached condition that requires an independent inspection of all detention areas on their property to be submitted to the city on an annual basis. I would like to close with comments related to the purpose of neighborhood associations in our community. To some residents, they are viewed as the organization that puts on the Fourth of July Party or organizes a neighborhood cleanup day. In the case of Greenwood Historic, we are more than that. We are here to preserve the integrity of our neighborhood, protect the property values of our residents, and advocate for the safety of those residents. We wish to be perceived as strong advocates for our association. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy Furman. Questions for Kathy? Okay, we'll go on down the line. Rochelle?
Yeah, Rochelle?
Rochelle? Please state your name and address.
She should be able to unmute herself.
Or Mark? Hello, I'm here. My name is Rochelle Quiner and I live at 119 34th Street. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. I am the acting Vice President of Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association. Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association, GHNA, was formed over 20 years ago. Its formation was a direct response to the city of Des Moines' request to have neighborhood groups form to protect their interests. Long before this, according to the Des Moines Development Forum in an article titled "A Historic Street Transformed," Grand Avenue west of downtown was called "The Grand Dame of Des Moines" with spacious mansions and tree-filled yards. Residents then most likely could not have imagined that most of the properties along Grand Avenue were turned into funeral parlors and what some call "Insurance Row." The properties that now comprise GHNA are similar in character to the homes on Grand and were built in the early part of the 20th century. There is a home on 37th Street that used to be inhabited by Vice President Henry A. Wallace that hosted three U.S. Presidents. Famous, eminent author and activist Louise Nowen grew up in one of the first houses on 37th Street. She was born in 1908 and at the time, the house sat in the midst of the family's small farm, but was later portioned off into other lots. Bill Bryson's book, "The Thunderbolt Kid," which details being raised in our neighborhood in the 1950s and 1960s, paints a picture of kids playing in the streets with the light until the streetlights came on, enjoying the woods and taking in the stately amenities that Des Moines had to offer like theaters and the Yonkers Tea Room. The area was then and continues to be a sought-after place to live. The charm of the neighborhood is that there is a mixture of charming homes of all different sizes set in a wooded area with beautiful wildlife. As far as my research permits me to understand, this neighborhood has been on the defensive from corporate development, starting in the 1970s when St. Joseph Academy was bought by Des Moines University, hereby referenced as DMU. In the 1980s, residents in our neighborhood entered into legal mitigation with the zoning board and DMU. Simply put, this was for reasons of development and residents feeling misled. Later, in 2002, a street with 11 houses that reached south of Grand was demolished one year after the city of Des Moines repaved their streets. And if you could please scroll a little bit further down, you will see the original advertisement for these homes on the screen. So these were the homes that were demolished south of Grand in 2002. We also lost two homes to flooding, as Mrs. Furman mentioned previously. In 2019, DMU asked to rezone their property to fill their immediate parking needs. However, at that time, they had plans to leave our neighborhood anyway. Some of the homes on 31st Street are currently owned by DMU and on 37th Street, two residences are now owned by tax-exempt organizations. And if you look a little bit further down, it will show you a map of our neighborhood in 1970. Thank you very much. Today, Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association is again put on the defensive. Our neighborhood has heard many times that the Wesley Acres proposal is not the same as the DMU one. Wesley has communicated with us and this is appreciated. However, we can't look at the overall development separately. One common thread we hear repeatedly from Wesley and that we heard from DMU is that their businesses can't survive if we can't accommodate their continued development. That reasoning is one-sided and doesn't respect the placement of a corporation within a historic neighborhood. I would urge our corporate neighbors to not develop to the maximum of their footprint and to please work to keep the historic integrity of the area. In a relatively short span of time, Grand Avenue has changed drastically and I would urge us all to be cautious of further development south and west into our neighborhoods. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Okay, we'll continue to go down the line. Mark? And because so many people want to speak, see if your perspective differs from previous speakers.
Hey, this is Mark Quiner. Can you hear me?
Yes. Uh-huh.
Okay. I will be brief. My name is Mark Quiner and I live at 119 34th Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50312. I'm speaking in opposition to Wesley Acres' proposed PUD amendment. If I could summarize the nature of my opposition, it is simply that we have another situation where a large organization wants to encroach on our neighborhood. Very specifically, the addition on the western side of Wesley's campus will further encroach on 37th Street residents, diminishing the character and the value of the homes on the street. In December, I attended a meeting at Wesley Acres Headquarters with CEO Rob Kretzinger to discuss potential ways the neighborhood could work with Wesley. Wesley has been vocal about how they have been transparent and cooperative with the neighborhood and their expansion plans. Just because they have been transparent does not mean their plans are in the interest of GHNA members. When we went to this meeting and voiced some concerns about the plans, Mr. Kretzinger, the CEO of Retirement Community, pulled his mask down below his chin and went into a monologue about how he has been cooperative, that Wesley Acres is an amenity to the neighborhood and that they will close their campus if they are blocked from expanding. Wesley is seeking to hold our community hostage with threats of closure to get what they want, even if it devastates private individuals' most valuable assets, their homes. This conversation tonight is about economic loss. Wesley's expansion plans will be a double gut punch following a year where many people in our community have experienced significant hardships from COVID-19. Wesley only cares about residents of our neighborhood in so much as it impacts their bottom line. Beyond that, they are happy to bully their way into getting what they want. I am asking the city of Des Moines to take a hard look at what is being asked and to put the economic needs of private residents over the economic needs of a tax-exempt business. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Ibsen, please.
Hi, Madam Chair. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I wanna just add my comments to Mr. McAfee. My name is Craig Ibsen. I live on 207 37th Street, on the west side of 37th Street. In general, I support Wesley Acres' expansion. I believe they've been a good neighbor over many years. But I do have concerns along the development along the west side of their Wesley Acres property that will impact the homes, most specifically my neighbors, the Carlsons and the McAvees. And I believe, you know, with a little bit of effort, those concerns could be addressed. You know, as a person that employs people in Des Moines, I'm very sensitive to the need for businesses to grow and thrive. So I just would urge the Planning and Zoning Commission to see if there might be a resolution to accommodate both the needs of the retirement community and the residents along the west side of 37th Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Heinz?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Christine Heinz. My address is 3401 John Lind Road and I'm the Secretary for the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to read to you a section from the minutes of the GHNA meeting of November 30th, 2000. And these minutes were not included in my letter. This is something that our neighborhood board has become aware of recently, is these minutes from a November 30th, 2000 meeting. As I read them, you'll notice how similar the issues of more than 20 years ago are to those we are discussing today. So this from the minutes, November 30th, 2000. Rod Cruzy reminded us that Chris Hensley, Bill Vanorstel, and Charlie Lozier have all encouraged us to get involved by taking our neighborhood to a higher level. Rod asks for everyone's support in asking Wesley Acres to be a good neighbor by limiting their growth to their current size. Rod informed us that Wesley Acres wants to amend their PUD to include a childcare facility. This request is critical to the neighborhood because of the concern that Wesley owns a large amount of property that extends to the established neighborhood and in time could potentially create an access onto Elmwood Drive. Wesley Acres has said that they have no intention of developing into this wooded, residentially-zoned area, but that would not limit their rights. Rod identified that in the early 1990s, much work was done by the adjacent neighbors to develop a covenant to limit Wesley Acres' infiltration into the R1 neighborhood. It is the opinion of those neighbors that Wesley Acres has not kept their part of the bargain and have not completed some specific landscaping and buffering plantings that are specifically identified on the PUD. Recently, Wesley Acres cut a walking path through the wooded lot and in part, had to remove some significant trees that has reduced the existing buffer. The neighbors fear that the continued growth of Wesley Acres into the woods reduces the existing buffer and ultimately reduces the quality environment for the adjacent residential neighborhood. Other byproducts of Wesley Acres' continued growth are as follows. Increased lighting without shielded light sources. Increased noise. Increased vehicular traffic. Loss of buffer for residential area from high-density use. Failure to protect some of the last urban forestry. Uncontrolled high-density development in a stable neighborhood could diminish or destroy property values. The neighborhood has asked to sign a petition that requests that Wesley Acres complete specified landscaping required by a 1992 PUD, limit development to that currently existing or in progress, maintain the undeveloped woodlands undeveloped by any improvements, should not use the residentially-zoned property, the wooded area to the south, for access to their complex. Susan Moritz of Wesley Acres, who was a member of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association, asked to respond. She stated that the Children's Garden had lost their lease and was looking to relocate when they came to Wesley Acres. Christie Lozier responded that she had spoken with the owner of the property where Children's Garden is a tenant and he told her that Children's Gardens has not lost their lease and were welcome to stay for as long as they choose. The petition was passed for signatures of the neighbors. Meeting was adjourned at 9:00 PM. So those are minutes from more than 20 years ago and the issues just sound so much like what we've been talking about today and over the years between now and then. From a personal standpoint, my house is several blocks to the south of Wesley Acres. I can't see their campus from my house. However, I feel just as strongly as my friends on 37th Street that any further encroachment on the neighborhood, either physically or visually, will eventually erode property values in the entire neighborhood. The proposed pool complex on the west side of their campus will be visible above and between two beautifully-maintained historic homes at the entrance to our neighborhood on 37th Street and it will change the character of this iconic street. Our neighborhood is a great asset to Des Moines and to Wesley Acres. People buy houses here because of its historic and varied architectural styles, majestic trees, rolling hills, the proximity to downtown Ingersoll, Greenwood Park, and other desirable features of our city. Many of the residents of Wesley Acres' owned homes in this neighborhood are nearby and the neighborhood is the reason they've chosen Wesley Acres for their later years. Any additional creep into our neighborhood, either physical or visual, needs to be prevented. And I'm just gonna add, I really appreciate some of the things that Wesley Acres is planning to do. For example, renovating the Chamberlain House. It's primarily, as others have noted, this pool complex on the west side is a big concern for the character of our neighborhood. And just looking at all the letters that came in in support of what Wesley Acres wants to do, it makes me think the more they build there, the more residents they have, well, they're gonna, they might have many people supporting, as opposed to our neighborhood who's been here far longer than them. But of course, we have fewer people to speak. So I do thank you for the opportunity for me to speak tonight.
Thank you. Ron Stager?
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, yes, Lon Stager.
Can you address, please?
13 Southwest 34th Street. So I'm south, you know, kind of the south part of the Neighborhood Association.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I want to talk specifically about the variance request to expand the parking lot to the south along 37th Street. And it kind of ties in with what other people have talked about with the scope creep that's gone on. I mean, if you can go out to Wesley's website and they do a nice job explaining the history of their property, but you have to keep in mind that their founding organization from Mount Pleasant bought a private residence in Mount Pleasant bought a private residence in a residential neighborhood, and in the last 20 or 30 years, they basically built a city around it. I mean, in my opinion, it's already overdeveloped and very dense, and now they're looking at what's happened over a period of time is, we saw this with Des Moines University as well, they applied for a variance, get that, they applied for another variance, and it's always more and more and more. And I think we're heading down a very slippery slope with this west side expansion because if you break that glass and allow, even though it's a small parking lot with eight spots, now you've broken that glass and they're now to 37th Street. And I submitted a couple of pictures to the commission. There's a sizable empty property there. I would venture to say this is a multiple. This is probably four, five, six times the size of the eight spots that they want to do. And I'm literally standing in that parking lot facing south. This is behind the Wesley Bolton, and those brick walls are the backside of garages. So what I don't understand is, for eight spots, why couldn't they develop it right there? I mean, it touches the parking lot. To me, it makes no sense whatsoever to request to go to 37th unless there's another motive. And the history here supports this unequivocally. Wesley backed off of the access egress from 37th, probably because there's so much involved in this request. But if you, again, allow that variance to let that parking lot go to the 37th to the west, you can almost bet that down the road, there will be another variance request to have access and egress off 37th, which only exacerbates a traffic problem we have when Greenwood Elementary School is in session. And I would say it sets the table for, eventually, my expectation is they'll want to take Wesley Bolton down, and the reason why they don't want to put a parking lot in this space is because this then is the next big structure. And now, if you're Kevin McPhee, now you've got a sizable structure to your east and to your north. And again, history supports that this is what Wesley Acres does. This is what Des Moines University does. Even after they sign agreements that are codified that say they won't, they come back later and ask to change the PUD. So that's why, I think it's really imperative for the commission to take a stand at this point in time and say, we're just not going to do this. And we're advocates of Wesley Acres, and we think that the beauty of our neighborhood provides a lot of benefit to their residents. You can't drive down 37th Street during the daytime and not find a Wesley Acres resident walking up and down the street. I mean, they use the neighborhood, so I don't understand this sort of, you know, push to kind of degrade the neighborhood. It's sort of like, you know, shooting themselves in the foot, but, so that's a big thing I wanted to say, is that this scope creep at some point has to stop, and you've got to respect the fact that they bought a property in a residential neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eric Bergland.
Yes, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm going to keep this brief. My neighbors have done an excellent job speaking. My name's Eric Bergland. I live at 3314 John Lind Road. I want to make very simple what we're talking about and what the decision to be made is with respect to a plan that includes this western expansion. This is a 40-foot-tall structure that extends 100 feet toward residential homes where currently there is nothing. And I think that the drawings that are presented and the elevations that certainly do look nice do not fairly represent how fundamentally this is going to change the elevation, not only to the people who live in these homes that back up immediately to it, but also anybody that would walk, bike, or drive down 37th Street, which is a main entry to our neighborhood. The role of this commission, of course, is to enact the zoning plan of the city and to respond to requests to vary the plan or to change a PUD, as in this case, and balance the interest of all the stakeholders here. I find it interesting that not only the folks from Wesley, but also city staff cite a commercial reason, meaning a business reason, to support this intrusion on the neighborhood. What request for an expansion to a commercial building would not have a commercial reason, would not provide a commercial benefit? That cannot be a reason to approve a plan because nobody expands commercial property unless there's a business reason to do it. Digging deeper, it appears, based upon the conversations that have been had and the lack of any sort of flexibility communicated to us about this western piece of the project, it appears that the location of this structure is based upon not only the desire to have these amenities, but the commercial convenience of it. Because if other locations on the property were equally commercially convenient, meaning of the same expense, certainly those would have been explored versus facing the opposition that's being faced today. So I'd submit to the commission that I cannot support, and I understand why the Neighborhood Association does not support, this design, which is based upon commercial convenience, to be weighed so heavily over a permanent destruction to the residential character of this neighborhood, which is a crown jewel of the city of Des Moines. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there more people who would like to speak? Please raise your hand. I see Scott Carlson.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you for your time, and I know it's been becoming a long evening. I live at 315 37th Street, and I am just to the east of HNI as well, or the west of HNI as well. I want to thank Rob and Darren, they're good guys, they've met with us, they've tried to work with us, and it's unfortunate that we didn't pass. I want to also let you know, my mother was a longtime resident of Wesley Acres. She passed away last January, but was well taken care of. Actually, you can leave that five up, it's fine for now. And she was well taken care of. I get that Wesley is good for our neighborhood. At the risk of upsetting my neighborhood friends, years ago, I was in favor of the proposed retirement community at the old Scientology property when I first moved here within a year, because Wesley was a good neighbor when I first moved in. Maybe naive on my part, but I was, thought that that would be a good use of space, that that project did not go forward, but I know I upset a few neighbors when I was for it. My story from that point forward, the story of broken promises, visible intrusive buildings, noise pollution, light pollution, and general disregard for neighbors like me. Please take a look at the pictures I have submitted, if you can. Actually, if you want to bring up page 87, that may be better, and you can bring up mine too, but... If you can look at that picture, you'll see a tree, and Bert, if you can kind of go right in the middle there, a tree right there, can you see that tree, it's a little pear-shaped? That is the size of the building. And if you go back now to some other pictures, maybe, you know, mine from what I submitted, it'll actually show you that same pear tree is there, as you can go again from the street. You can see it again, that's the tree, that's the size of the building that you're going to see, it'll be all glass, so at sunset it'll reflect, at night it'll be lit, it'll probably be quite a bit wider, but that's what you're going to see from 37th Street. It will interrupt what we do. Since I've been there, Wesley has taken down 13 trees, mostly 100 years or more, and there'll be seven more coming, which is 20 in total, since I've moved there. I've removed my pool in my home, if you can go to my backyard picture, Bert, and I've started to put some trees in to do my own buffering, because I do have my own responsibility to try to give myself some peace. But as you can see, you can see the original hospital, which is circular behind me, and it's set 100 feet back. Wesley asked me about 10 years ago if they could add 10 parking spaces that were desperately needed, but they had to take down some old oaks. I said yes, I was new to the neighborhood, I realized they needed parking, all I asked was the buffer be replaced, and that never occurred. Fast forward a couple of years, I come home, and you can see my driveway, I come home, and the trees behind my home that were on my side, which still on Wesley's property, had all been taken down, pretty much clear-cut. I ran back there, met the gardener, asked him what he was doing, and he basically said he would like to grow grass in the place of the trees. I asked him politely to stop, he was very agreeable. I spoke with the general manager of the property, he did not realize that many trees were to come down, and they would put trees back in their place. Four were planted, two thrive, and two you still can't see. That was over 10 years ago. I'm letting you know, my story is not different than most people that live by a large institution. Institutions by default have an inability to react and intermix with small neighbors. We are just a tiny, tiny sliver of their empire. They have eight properties. This one is valued at $37 million on the tax rolls. They have Annesley Businesses, Wesley Wheels, Wesley Meals, Wesley Hospice, Wesley Adult Day, and I'm sure lots of others. Wesley talks about staying current and needing to add their neighborhood hurting amenities to stay competitive, but I think they forget that we are probably their biggest amenity. Like I said, my mother stayed with them for quite a while. The current property is already overbuilt, and the traffic intensity is already stressed beyond their current footprint. That's why they needed 10 more spaces 10 years ago. However, when they add these pools and a workout facility and 150-seat auditorium, that adds more intensity. When they redo the Chamberlain Mansion and put in a bistro, that adds more intensity. When they allow up to 300 members in their workout facility, that adds more intensity. There is no more room for more people on that piece of ground as it currently sits. Why take away more of the green space, more of the parking, and the last few trees that remain? I think enough is enough. And I think it should be noted, I've been successful in lowering my taxes because of what you see in this picture. All I did was walk in, talk to them about my story, and show them a couple of pictures, and they agreed that my livelihood and my property value is diminished because I get to look at an old infirmary, which now has become a memory carrier, because they decided to take that hospital, make it a memory, and build a bigger one to the east. I'm going to go back to when we talked about the, I think it was item number, I don't know, eight or nine, the trash enclosures that we talked about for 30, not we, but the board was talking about that are on Fluor Drive. I invited Bert Gross to come to my backyard to show he could take some pictures, or maybe see pictures, or understand kind of what we're looking at, and maybe come up with a solution that can be mutually beneficial to both parties. Unfortunately, I was told that's not possible, but after I saw so many pictures of the trash enclosure, I'm not sure why I was turned down. He did say he could come at the request of P&amp;Z, so I'm making that request, that maybe he can come to our backyards, take a look at how this looks from our point of view, and maybe come up with a solution. Since I couldn't get Bert to come, I invited an architect over. He said that building will be intrusive in size, it'll be intrusive in noise, it'll be intrusive by light, and once it is built, it will never come down, it'll be there forever. In closing, the original home that was built there was 7,500 square feet, and I believe was left to ministers or priests that could not have, you know, that didn't have enough money to retire comfortably, and the home was given to them to spend the rest of their days. Since then, that 7,500-square-foot home on a nice grand piece of property with the majestic trees and probably woods all around it, has now become a quarter-million square feet. I find it hard to believe that was ever the intention of the property of the owners when it was given. Please protect my house, please protect my direct neighbors, please protect my neighborhood and keep this historic neighborhood intact. You will notice, I have two neighbors to my south. One is Drake University, and one is a group from the Episcopal Church. They are both institutionally run, and you'll notice that they have not commented and probably will not comment on what's going on, because they are also part of a large institution, and it's in the nature for people not to get involved and protect when they're part of an institution. Please look out for us. Please keep this historic neighborhood a gem within the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak to this item? Please raise your hand.
I'm not seeing any other names.
Either. So the applicant, can you come, would you like to address these issues?
Yes, I would, if I could. Thank you. I tried to take some notes, they were coming fast and furious, so I apologize if I bounce around. A couple of small things I'd like to make sure that we gain some perspective on. The actual building height of the, Jay, I can't, Bert, I can't read that, it's so small, I don't have my glasses, but the aquatics building is approximately 35 feet. It barely reaches the top of the existing building. Taking into consideration that there's a six-to-eight-foot elevation change between Mr. McPhee and Mr. Carlson's properties, it actually reduces the visual impact significantly in that area. I think also left out here is the commitment that we made to both Scott and Kevin on collaboratively landscaping those buffers. Scott had told us the story about what happened a number of years ago, obviously pre-me, and I stood in his backyard, and I stood in Kevin's backyard, and I told him I agreed, and we'll put together a landscape plan that buffers us from you and you from us, to be honest. And those plans were submitted to them, I did not get a response from either of them on that, but we have made a commitment to make a sizable investment, because landscaping's not shown on this PUD drawing for future to any extent. That's a piece that's really missing from this conversation. I've heard people relate to us as a giant tax-exempt organization. We actually pay about $275,000 a year in property taxes for this campus, so I want to make sure that that's clear, that no one thinks we're looking to... We sit in the same type of situation that everybody else does. We pay our taxes and we don't ask for reductions. Let's see, what else did I have here? The west side, we have put a lot of effort into it, not a little bit of effort, but a lot of effort. We've actually, when we were originally asked by Mr. McPhee to switch the buildings, we looked at that. There were some challenges, both structurally, operationally, and just overall with the way it would flow in the buildings. There's no, there's no good way to put it on the east side, and it's not because it's commercially acceptable or more advantageous to us to put it here. This is obviously an open space that we can develop into with these amenities, but we did reduce the length of the building or depth of the building I by eight feet. So the two buildings now are slightly different than what you see here, but there's about a 10-foot, 7-inch difference in those H and I as far how far they come out into the property. So merely 10 feet is what we're talking about here. As far as the I building, we have gotten deep into research into glass that I've never been into before, and we've actually gotten to the And we've actually gotten to the point where we've selected glass that has a 2% reflectivity rate. And that is what we proposed to Mr. Mcfee to put into that building. So there would not be any undue glare off of that building. Lights in that building can't be above the pool. They'd have to be located 11 feet or below. So therefore the lighting level will actually be below the fence level at his home in his backyard. I think lastly, what needs to be said is we're not adding any units or residential units to this community with this improvement. This is 100% investment into this community and this campus and our residents, current residents' way of life, as well as the residents that will be coming to Wesley Acres, hopefully over the next, you know, 10, 20, 30 years. This is, without any revenue increase, that we are looking for nothing. We're preparing for nothing more other than making this as an investment into this community. And I think that needs to be understood as well. As far as development into the South Woods, we don't have any plans there. We don't do it. We've offered a written agreement prepared by our attorney that we just received back this morning with notes after four weeks of having it in the Neighborhood Association's hands. I honestly believe we have hit every item that has come up along the way in discussions, both in person, email, Zoom, phone, whatever it might be. And I feel really good about this project. I feel even better about the investment and what it can do to the way of life of the residents and the, and the people in the neighborhood and the way we can look at this more outwardly and open up to the community. It's more pedestrian friendly. It creates more amenities to the outside, especially during a pandemic year when being outside is so critical. We found that that's the one place you can go to escape at times to just clear your head. So we're happy with this plan. We'd like to keep pursuing it as is. I hope that everyone would consider all of those items. And I, if there's any further information you need on anything that we have done to, to mitigate any of the issues that have been brought to us, which in my opinion is everything that has been said tonight. I'd be happy to provide that information.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant from commission?
Jan, this is Greg Jones.
Yes.
I think I remember clear back at the beginning of this that Bert said that they disagreed with four and six. Is that true?
We, we still have the eight spaces that are identified in item number four on the, on the plan that was resubmitted. Six, we don't necessarily disagree with, but we've actually designed with that intent. But as it read, I guess my question back to Bert was, it noted adjacent residential properties. And I didn't know how it would influence the east side of our property with the new parking areas that we put on that side. So I'm not opposed to six. We've actually designed to it. And David Benz can correct me if I'm wrong, who's with Bishop Engineering. But I only brought it up because of the eight spots on the east side.
This is, I guess, the eight spots. When you say the east side, do you mean the east side of 37th Street or the east side of the project?
I'm sorry, the west side.
Okay, okay.
I apologize.
Other questions for the applicant?
But I can answer that question. It's, we were only recommending that the new parking areas meet the NX three. So if you didn't add those eight parking spaces, then obviously you wouldn't have to provide any of the landscaping around there.
Understood.
Hello Darren, this is Greg Watier.
Hi Greg.
Tell me approximately the setback or how far building I is to the east of the Mcfee residence. My, my rough guess on the drawing is maybe 75 feet. But do you happen to have?
I actually, I went on the GIS site today and did some pulls on that from the Mcfee home itself to that.
The property line.
Property line?
Yeah, from the property line.
Property line is about 81 feet is what I had when I very, obviously using GIS isn't perfect. But I had 81 feet from the fence to the aquatics building.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? For the applicant? Okay, it's time to close the public hearing. We've heard a lot of discussion. Commission? What are you thinking? I guess I wanted to say that, you know, I want to thank the Neighborhood Association for their research, their, you know, concern and expressing themselves so, so well. So we do care what neighbors think. We do care about the Neighborhood Association, so. Commission?
This is Francis Bogus speaking. We've been down this road before and it was a couple of years ago with DMU. And we listened to the Greenwood Neighborhood Association at another South of Grand neighborhood association. And I have the opinion that because of the, and I respect what Wesley Acres does and the services they provide, but I do think this scope creep is real. And I think it impacts the neighbors. And I think as part of being the voice of neighborhood associations, I would not be in favor of granting the request from Wesley Acres for the PUD. If there's some reason that Wesley Acres think they could sit down with the Neighborhood Association, maybe try to reach an accommodation independently. But at this point in time, I would not support staff recommendation.
Thanks Francis. Other feelings, reactions? Thoughts?
Yeah, this is Greg Watier again. I think at this point I would be in favor of supporting staff recommendations for the, because of the following thoughts. I actually believe that reinvigorating, stabilizing, making this property more cohesive, doing work on the site, doing work on multiple sides, I think is a positive. I think it's a positive, the value of their property. And in some ways, I think it's a positive of the value of adjacent properties. I think 35 story, I'm sorry, I can't believe I said that, 35 foot tall building on the west side that's set back 75 feet. You know, I do not consider that something that's a huge encumbrance. I understand those neighbors can have those views and those opinions. But I think overall Wesley is respectfully staying back off the properties. I very much appreciate that they're trying to enter into a legal agreement about the southern forest area. And so overall, I think I would be in support of staff.
Thank you. Other comments?
Jan, this is Greg Jones. I agree with the other Greg in support staff.
Okay, other comments?
This is Dory. I support staff. This is a hard decision for me. My mother lived at Wesley Acres for 10 years before dying there this past May. She lived in the memory care unit and then on the high skilled nursing floor. I think there, it's a wonderful facility in our community. And to have a facility like that, that's close, that you don't have to drive Claire out to West Des Moines to access, so I do support staff. I believe it's a great addition to our community.
Thanks, Dory. Other reactions? Thoughts?
This is Johnny Alcivar. I also agree with, with Greg as far as supporting this project. I think I would ask to see perhaps a little more of that buffering aspect. I don't know if we need to see that. I'll let staff tell us if we need to see that here at the PUD stage or if that's something that will be taken care of at the site plan stage. So it would be nice to see additional trees along those, those areas of concern with the neighbors.
This is Bert. I could speak to that. Right now we've worded condition number six to just say that it shall be landscaped in accordance with NX three. The other option would be to reword that as the buffer shall be reviewed and approved by the planning zoning commission during this development site plan review.
I could support that, Bert. This Greg.
And this is the other Greg. I support that too.
Okay, other comments? Okay, time for a motion.
This is Dory. I'll move approval of staff with the addition on the landscape buffering.
Thanks, Dory. Tyler?
Abby Chungis?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato? Will Page?
No.
Johnny Alcivar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Dory Bries?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Abstain?
Caleb Berkston?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
No.
Carolyn Jensen?
No.
Francis Bogus?
No.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato, are you still with us? I don't think I see him on here anymore. So that motion carries eight, four, one.
Okay, thank you. We are ready for item number 14.
I remember the commission, Jason Van Essen with the city's planning staff. Excuse me. Item 14 is a rezoning request at 1503 Fifth Avenue in the Riverbend neighborhood and land use plan amendment as part of that. The, see if I can get my slides to forward. Here we go. This is the subject property on the northeast corner of Clark Street and Fifth Avenue. You can see the kind of the outline of the, the house building and parking in the back. Photographs of the property. And I have floor plans applicant provided. We can come back to these. I think just a couple of things to note here is the entrance for the second floor unit is on the front. And then the main level is on the kind of the backside of the porch. The house, I'll just flip through these and get to the staff report. So the property has rights to single family or one household use. The applicant purchased it in 2019, started renovation on the property and was advised that they needed a building permit. Got that permit in November of 2019. So they, this, this project started, so it started underneath the old zoning code and it started without permits. The permit that was issued in 2019 was specific to the building being used as a one household dwelling. During the follow-up inspections, the inspection staff recognized that the applicant was intending to convert it to duplex. We understand from the application, the applicant, that there had been work prior to the building by a previous owner to convert it to multi-use. I believe it was owned by a church to the north. Not sure, it, from assessor records and from our rental code records, there's no record of it being converted legally. In looking at the application, you know, the question we ask ourselves is, you know, first, does it comply with the land use plan? If it doesn't, is the warranted to make an amendment? So the area surrounding the subject property is designated as low density residential on the feature land use map. And converting the house to a duplex represents a density of 9.3 units per acre. If you extrapolate that, that fits into the low, medium density residential category in the future land use map. We included kind of a description of that, the language in the code. I think that designation in, in general makes sense for the area. Portions of the Riverbend neighborhood are already have that designation. And so staff were comfortable with that, that proposed amendment to the land use plan. So the next question is to look more at zoning and, and dial in on the site and how, how that use might impact the area around it. We do believe the lot is large enough to support a duplex use or two units. It's on a corner, which is another asset as far as where it makes sense in a residential neighborhood to place duplexes or small multifamily to minimize impact on other areas within the neighborhood. So we're fine, we've found a lot of support for the request. The, the one thing that came up as we looked at this that kind of led us to making a couple of recommended conditions was amount of pavement and then also parking access. We are recommending approval subject to two conditions. And one is that the all vehicle access to onsite parking shall be provided from the alley. Then a driveway to the street is prohibited. That matches up with their, the way the property is laid out currently. I don't believe the applicant is opposed to that. We just want to make sure that as the property moves forward in time and perhaps is under different ownership, that additional driveways are not, you know, added because that, that would kind of start impacting the residential character of the area or the, its impacts in vehicle movement. The other part of our recommendation is that we believe the, that the site should be brought into performance with the current maximum impervious area requirements of chapter 135 to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. In the body of the report, we referenced the house type D standard for this area, which, which is a combination of the footprint of the house, any buildings, and then the pavement. And the standard for that, that house type is 50% of the site is the maximum amount that should be covered with a hard surface. And that, those standards, those impervious area standards are there for stormwater management purposes. Try to get my stormwater into the, into the ground, not run off the storm sewer. They're also there as a means to make sure that we have adequate green area within our neighborhoods. And so as staff, we, we feel that we should look at that a little bit with the applicant. If you look at the aerial, flip back to that. You can see that a substantial amount of the property is paved. There's a walk all the way around the perimeter of the, of the house sidewalk to both streets. the way around the perimeter of the house sidewalk to both streets. And then a substantial amount of green yard is paved. I did some quick math as far as where they're at, based off a GIS estimation. You know, I think they're exceeding what 50% by about 500 to 540 square feet. The reason I didn't give anything specific as far as meeting the 50% threshold or a square foot threshold is that I think we need to sit down with them and work out what makes sense because we recognize that there may need to be more pavement than 50% of the site. So I just wanted, I apologize for kind of going maybe a little over in depth on that, but I know that's the crux of the disagreement with the applicant. And I wanted to share with the commission kind of the background or the thought process and why we were making that recommendation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. This is the response map. We did get one card in favor of the request. Did hear from the neighborhood, the Neighborhood Association Board. They elected not to take a formal position as they didn't have an agreement on the board as to what they felt about the project. They had mixed emotions. So that is that. Happy answering questions. I do have a presentation or a drawing, a few pictures that were provided by the applicant this evening that I will help them go through during their presentation.
Thanks. Thanks, Jason. The applicant online, state your name and address, please.
John, if you could unmute yourself. There you go.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is David Miller, 178 Honeyline Road, Reynolds, Iowa. And we're speaking on behalf of John Ching tonight regarding the proposed rezoning of his property at 1503 Fifth Avenue. Mr. Ching has invested nearly $300,000 in renovation and improvement of the house and property. The duplex has living areas of 1,500 and nearly 1,100 square feet. Monthly rents will be $2,100 to $1,500 respectively. And Mr. Ching will do background checks and credit checks on potential renters. I believe Mr. Ching would be an attentive and active landlord. And I think the house is a very, very, it's a great, great looking place, I think. Mr. Ching didn't deliberately ignore zoning regulations. It's my understanding that when he purchased the place, there were like three, albeit not legitimate, but three living units there. And by the time he found a label, he was in violation of the zoning regulations, quite a bit of construction had been done. He didn't want to bring up construction crews, so he went ahead with the construction, hoping that we would be able to get some zoning consideration with changing that. So I would say that concerning the ordinance of no more than 50% of the property not being covered by buildings from impervious material and the abundance of concrete on the property, Mr. Ching understands the concern for aesthetics and the water runoff. The sidewalks surrounding the house are really arbitrary. They were designed for the convenience of his tenants and the outer doors. And he did, and there again, he did not realize that there would be restrictions of that sort during the construction. He, of course, doesn't want to reduce the concrete any more than he has to. I mean, you know, it's new concrete, new construction. He would be willing to remove concrete from the north part of the parking area if necessary for compliance and hoping he could replace that with gravel. He was informed that this ordinance went into effect after he began the construction and wondered if that information is accurate and enough sort of it is, but he wondered if he could get by without destroying any of the concrete and just leave as is. But if not, you know, he's amenable to doing what is necessary to get the rezoning amendment. In relation to the other recommendation, it looked to me when I was on the property, it looked as though although the entry to the parking area was close to the street, it looked like it was off the alley. And from what Mr. Van Essen was saying, I think we're okay on that. But, you know, any guidance, if that isn't the case, then any guidance in that regard would be appreciated. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Is there anyone else here who wants to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition or has concerns about this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Commission, discussion.
Jan?
Yes.
This is Carolyn, and I don't know where I fit in this. I do know historically, this was a, it was a daycare center. That's probably why there's some concrete around the backside. But I do know, so I live in this neighborhood, so I may have to probably recuse myself. I don't know. But I do know that the neighborhood, about 15 years ago, a couple people worked really hard to rezone to prevent houses from becoming duplexes again. So, and I think that was about 15 years ago, and I'd hate to have to redo that. I feel like it's going against the efforts of the neighborhood at that time. And it was interesting to hear that the Neighborhood Association was in conflict or had not decided. I don't know what their response was. And Jason probably knows a little bit better. Jason, do you have more insight on that?
Sure. What I gathered from talking with John Royal, who I, has been on the leadership, I think he was the president up until here recently, I believe. He indicated that the applicant attended a neighborhood meeting. There was mixed emotion about it. At that time, they thought, they were told that there wasn't a staircase in the house and that it had been already converted. And I think he conveyed that there was some sympathy to the, but also some folks that were also opposed to it in general for the reasons that you outlined. But it was a mixed bag. And then more recently, once it, you know, became on agenda and received notice, you know, I was able to provide him with information from the application and then what we'd found of staff, and he recirculated that. And the the feedback that he got, they forwarded on to me was, you know, that they, again, weren't going to take a formal position, but it was kind of, as I scanned through it, it was the same where I think there was some angst about.
Slipper slope?
One, you know, work being done without a permit, but also two, the things that you've talked about with the past efforts. But there was also a recognition, though, I think that the property is somewhat large and the lot's large. So there wasn't a strong conclusion one way or the other on it.
So I live with an experience of sitting in front of the city commission for four hours with the same situation where somebody mistakenly or uneducatedly converted a house to a duplex and said that there were two staircases. So it was appropriate. It should be a duplex. And we sat in opposition for four hours and went before our city and they said they felt sympathetic to them not being educated. And I feel like the neighborhood has worked really hard to educate the buyers. And so, anyway, I just wanted to share that.
Madam Chair, this is Michael Ludwig. Could I speak for one moment?
Please.
Carolyn, I recall that downzoning that we did in the Riverbend neighborhood. I did want to just provide some insight into what that change was. We took it from, I believe, R3 or R4 zoning down to single-family residential zoning.
Yep.
And part of that was out of concern that the single-family homes had been carved into multiple units. And that includes, could include duplexes, but certainly it was multiple units, like we've seen historically in like the Drake neighborhood, for example, where conversions to multiple units were allowed, you know, unchecked for a number of years. I mean, there weren't building code requirements or rental code requirements to do that. And so similar to the Drake rezoning, downzoning, we took areas back from R3 and R4 down to R160. But even in the Drake neighborhood, for example, there's been some recognition and some support for some large houses that have come in and asked for maybe two units. So as far as taking it back to what it was, you know, the previous zoning allowed multifamily residential and it was just purely based on the lot area was the number of units you could get in the dwelling. And in this instance, no more than two units would be allowed by this zoning change. So just a little perspective on what happened before, what zoning was before, how many units, you know, could have been allowed in a, under the old zoning versus what's being proposed in this. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Well, I'll close the public hearing.
Oh, could I ask, may I ask a question, please, Jan?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to follow up on what Mike had just said. So my question is with the city's position in terms of allowing the larger occupancy, was the city's thought that in terms of giving something, but also in taking something, that the taking something would be the requirement of maximum impervious area requirements be satisfied to the, to the planning administrator? In other words, it seemed to me that the city was offering, you know, this, but requiring that, which puts in a kind of a compromise, which, you know, seems, at least to me, to make a little bit of sense.
Yeah, just, this is Jason Van Essen, staff. You know, our thought as we looked at the conditions was to just, you know, try to see if there's anything that we felt was needed to mitigate impact. And any case that comes before you, you know, we're looking at, you know, is there impact that should be mitigated and how do you achieve that? And so both, you know, where vehicles access to property can cause impact and then also the amount of impervious surface, both in terms of runoff, but also the aesthetic and visual qualities, you know, does it, does it, how closely does the duplex look like just a standard house or a residential property and fits in with the area around it? And that's the premise for those recommended conditions.
Madam Chair, that makes sense to me. And within that, within that spirit, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Okay, thanks. Will? Any other comments? We have a motion. Tyler?
Dory Brials?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Sorry, dropped my mic. Caleb Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jensen?
No.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungus?
Yes.
Will Page?
Yes.
Johnny Alcevar?
Yes.
And Emily Webb?
Yes.
Motion carries 12, one.
Thank you, Tyler. I believe those are the items. Now, we do have some other items. It's my understanding that Carolyn, Lisa, and Emily have been nominated to be on the nominating committee or have agreed.
We agreed. We agreed.
Are there any other nominations from the floor? We have a slate of Carolyn, Lisa, and Emily.
Madam Chair, this is Eric.
Yeah, Eric.
Those three are the nominating committee that have to be appointed. So they would come up with a slate that would be at the next meeting. So.
Okay, so they are.
They are not the slate of the people now.
No, we, yeah, we know we're the committee.
Okay, you're the committee. Are there any other nominations from the floor?
Well, the nominations would happen at the next meeting. So this committee would present a slate at the next meeting.
I have to tell you, I think I'm getting fired here.
Yeah, that's all right. And I understand it's confusing because we started talking about this in November. So the way the bylaws read is that this meeting, the committee is officially appointed. They come back with a slate at the next meeting and then you will also open nominations from the floor, from the commission.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Well, all right. Thank you, Carolyn, Lisa, and Emily. I think it's getting past my bedtime.
You're welcome, Jan.
So thank you for serving on this committee. We look forward to your slate at the next meeting. And if anyone else wants to be nominated, you know, whatever. All right, number 17. Is there anything else? Mike or Eric or Jason or Bert or?
No, Jan, just thanks again for all the thoughtful deliberation tonight, long meeting. And that's kind of what happens when we have one meeting a month. It is nice to have that one meeting a month, though, because it allows us not to have a packet going out between Christmas and New Year's and allowed staff to have some time with families without having to worry about that stuff. So thank you for that. I'm sorry for the length of the meeting.
Yeah. Mike, I do, I do, excuse me, I do have a question. How do we organize the nominated committee? Is it on our charge to do that?
Mike, should I, this is Emily. Mike, would it just work if I emailed the group and then we just set up our own meeting? Is that fine?
Absolutely.
That's, yeah, that was a question.
Absolutely, that would be fine, Emily.
Okay, okay.
And then you just, then you just report that at the next meeting as your recommendation for the group, okay?
Okay, Carolyn and Lisa, I'll just email you and then we can meet in the next week just via Zoom to see.
Perfect.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Stay well. Anything else, Mike?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.